Would you please stand for the invocation remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, Father Ingalls?
Let us pray to the Lord. Lord Jesus Christ your God, look down upon the city of Fredericksburg and this council gathered here today. Enlighten their minds that they may rightly divide the word of thy truth, doing what is best for this city and the people who dwell herein. Grant them peaceful times that we may lead a calm and peaceful life, all reverence and sanctity. That all the actions taken here today may be blessed by you, your unoriginal father and that all holy good and life giving spirit, both now and ever, and as the ages of ages. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You see. Welcome to everyone. Thank you for being here this morning. Item number four is ceremonial matters, proclamations and employee recognition. Mr. Bailey.
No recognitions today, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, all right, we'll proclaim it a nice summer day. Number five, council comments.
Oh, real quickly, um, one of the most important items on the agenda, I'm guessing here based in the audience will be some of the hot conversations. This is the first time I've done it, so I just want to say my philosophy is preservation of historic assets. I think it's one of the most important things that we can do in this town. So as we go through this, I'm sure the mayor will talk about the fact that are the asks versus the budgets, there's quite a difference. So we had to really go through that and take a hard look at that. So please understand that. The other part is. I just want to acknowledge and thank the hospitality workers in this town, the folks that keep properties clean, lawns mowed. And just make this one of the most desirable places to visit Fredericksburg. That's the workforce. It probably doesn't get a lot of thanks, and I just want to acknowledge and thank them for the work they do to help make sure that city can can. Generate the hot taxes that we'll talk about this morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other comments?
Two things. One, I wanted to thank the Parks and Rec Department for helping get the splash pad up and running as well as the morning rotary. It is so fun to be out there. If you haven't gone, it's it's worth a trip, kids and adults. And I wanted to thank council member Klein for umping the the T-ball game last night. If you haven't gone out to the T-ball games, also very entertaining. Next week is the final week of it, and it is a blast to watch at Optimus Fields out at Lady Bird Park.
You want to talk about your fishing trip?
Very successful.
We have the option, counsel, to move items around on the agenda. And I want to hold the audience here just to get a sense of why you're here. Excuse me. How many of you here primarily to observe or be available for comment for hot distribution money? Okay, how many of you are here primarily for the issue with the city pools? All right, and then the others having to do with the sports field fees, tennis and so forth, those folks? Okay. Counsel with your, well, let's go ahead and do the consent agenda. Thank you. Number six. Six A is to consider the approval of the minutes for April 26th, May 15th, and May 16th.
I move that we approve the minutes from April 26th, May 15th, and May 16th with the edits that Shelley sent out yesterday for the May 16th agenda.
Second, mentioned in second to approve these minutes with corrections noted. Hold in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, let's do, let's do go ahead with the item seven A, take action on ordinance 20.307, mending fees for the use of sports fields, recreation fee, et cetera. We'll begin with Ms. Schmidt.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Andrea Schmidt, Parks Department. This item is something that we brought to you back in December of last year. We did a presentation on some of the challenges we've been facing with sports fields and tennis court, pickleball court usage with the increase in different groups and select and travel teams. At that time, we kind of got direction, try to keep the fees reasonable and also kind of put youth as the priority when it comes to use to the different facilities. So taking that in mind, we went back, we met with pretty much all of the organizations, different representatives, the people that would be paying the bills, and everybody seemed to be comfortable with what we went with. So Little League was paying $1,500 for use of the court or the field during the spring season, and we recommended that stay the same. St. Mary's was $600, and we recommend that's also stay the same. The field use was $25 per day. That was creating some problems because we really needed to during peak times have more rentals per day than just one. So what we're recommending is going to $10 per field for up to one and a half hours during peak season and then up to three hours during non-peak. And then $25 per field for more than three hours of use during non-peak season. Out of county residents would pay a little bit more, $25 for an hour and a half, and $50 per field for more than three hours. We would also ask that they pay a deposit simply because we don't necessarily know them and how they're going to take care of the field. We have had some problems with out of county people coming in and using the fields for tournaments and then not following our rule and regulations. The tennis courts, we would continue to not charge a fee for just regular use. We would only charge $25 per day for tournament use, and that would be just to help cover some of the costs in the bathrooms and toilet paper that's being used out there. For out of county residents, it would be $50 with a $500 deposit. So if you have any questions, I'll answer them at this time.
The ballparks now. Do you have tournaments? Do we have tournaments here?
We do have some, yes.
From out of town?
We've had a couple in the last few years. One of them, they did, we had a rain and we asked them not to use the fields and they used them anyways and caused some damage. But any of our local groups that have tournaments have been respectful of the fields.
Okay, so so the regular, I guess, Little League or whatever it may be, for one game, what did they charge?
So Little League pays a flat rate of $1,500, and that lasts from.
For the whole year?
For middle of February through about this time of year, a little bit, end of June, depending on tournaments.
And that was the P before?
Yes, sir.
So it stayed the same?
Correct.
And does that include Optimus T-ball? Because we did a separate agreement.
Yes, we did a separate agreement with Optimus. So they actually, they get to use the their field for free since they helped build it. And then we waived a certain, I think up to $2,500, I can't remember that exact number, for use of a secondary field, which is more than what they they've been needing. And we can always come back if that becomes an issue in the future.
Just to know if that need to be included in this?
So that's a separate, that was a separate agreement that's already been taken care of.
And then just to clarify, for the tennis courts, it's $25 a day, even if it's a like a tennis pro working with a student for an hour?
So no, that's something totally different. So one-on-one or any type of private clinics, private lessons, classes, those, we have a use agreement, another licensed use agreement where they pay us a percentage of their gross revenue. We also require that they give us insurance if they're going to be doing private lessons. So that's something that we do in all of our, in the fields. We have soccer camps that do that. We had camp gladiators doing that. We have lots of other organizations that have done that in the past.
Does that need to be in with this?
That's a total, that was something else separate that council had already adopted previously.
And is this all found in one place once this part is approved today?
I hopefully it'll, I've asked Shelley on that if it's all going to be put in the coordinates.
Just want to make it sure it's easy for everyone to understand.
Right, and we'll put, we have like a summary sheet that we keep on the parks website that summarizes all of our fees so that people can look there as well.
Any other questions for Andrew? I don't have anyone signed up to speak on item seven A. Did I miss anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
Motion second to approve ordinance 20.307, amending these fees. Any further questions? Hold over the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Item seven B will be a executive session item as we discussed replacing or reappointing people to these different boards. And they will come back out of executive session at the end and take that business on appointing those people. Let's go ahead and do item eight A. Chris, yeah, yeah, Chris. Item eight A is take action on amendments to the LCRA or line easements.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Similar to an item that we brought before y'all a little over a month ago. LCRA has approached the city about amending existing electric line easement. This is essentially property that the city owns, but LCRA has an easement that runs across it. The amendment would include the ability for a third-party fiber vendor to utilize the existing fiber that LCRA has on top of their existing infrastructure. So a very simple amendment to that to that easement, similar to the last easement that we brought before council. LCRA, we did ask them if they had additional easements that they would, or additional amendments that they'd be proposing to bring to the city. They likely will, but they're taking those as those third-party vendors approach LCRA asking for the utilization of that fiber. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding this amendment.
Assume it's a standard easement that they do any wrenching or what have you, if they have to replace everything, put it back in place.
It's all aerial. There's there's nothing underground. And this is again utilizing existing fiber that LCRA installed years ago when that infrastructure was built. So shouldn't be any disruption to the existing grounds.
Just just a comment, we spoke about this yesterday a little bit, and this doesn't fall into the city's umbrella, I guess, of authority. But it would be really interesting to see if LCRA, we encourage them to work with the carriers, the Verizons, the T-Mobiles of the world. If they could offload some of that network onto that fiber and alleviate some of the bandwidth issues we have in town.
Yeah, certainly. So LCRA has infrastructure all the way out to West Texas, all the way down to the Gulf. So, you know, this is utilization of that fiber to help with the broadband communication, not just in this area, but across the region.
We did something similar this few weeks ago.
A couple of months ago, yes.
So this is the same thing.
Yeah, just a different location.
Different location, okay.
Make a motion, we approve A, the amendments to lower Colorado authority, electric line.
Second, motion second to approve these amendments. Any questions? Hold over the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, we'll come to eight B now. I do have some people signed up for this. Take action on a non-exclusive license agreement with program provider for programs within city park pools for pool use and consider waiving lifeguard reimbursement for 2023. Schmidt, welcome back.
Morning again, Mayor and Council. Caitlin Brazil, I asked her to come up here, and the reason I did is she is the swimming pool expert. She's been here now, I don't know if this is her third or fourth summer, but I have to just say how much good she has done in our swimming pools. They are the cleanest and the safest they've ever been. And she and Haley, the new position that was approved last year, have been working very hard since February to try to recruit lifeguards and get the pool and the splash pad ready to open. So while this is not something popular we're discussing today, it is something that I think is going to make our pools just that much more safer. So in 2021, we came to council and got a license agreement approved and some fees for our swimming pools. With the new splash pad opening this year, we were told it'd probably be a good idea to check with our insurance company, which is Texas Municipal League, TML. to check with our insurance company, which is Texas Municipal League, TML, to find out if what we were doing was in the best, the safest practices. Well, they told us no, that it's not. They said we need to have city lifeguards present at the swimming pools anytime that they are open to the public, which is something we had not been doing. We had been told that we, although we're a Class B pool, which means we're open to the public, that we could be a different class while these other groups were using it, and we wouldn't have to have city lifeguards, and we could just put up signage. That was, we were told, no, that's not the case. We're a Class B pool no matter what. The city owns it, so we have to have city lifeguards there when anyone's using it. So since we found that out, we've met with the various organizations, we've been trying to recruit more lifeguards. We did go up to $18 starting pay, so we've gotten quite a bit of interest here in the last couple of weeks, or this last Thursday, last couple of days, I should say, for more lifeguards. So we're really hoping that we can have a class next Monday and Tuesday, and we can get five to six lifeguards, so that we can at least staff a park pool in the mornings. Now, one of the things that was changed in the agreement was instead of requiring adult supervision at the pools by these groups, we would require city lifeguards, and that they would reimburse us for the cost of the city lifeguards. Now, that is nothing we told these organizations until about two and a half weeks ago. So they were not able to budget for it, they were not able to include it in their registration fees. So what I'd really like to do is waive those fees this first year, and then let them figure out how they can include that in their fees for next year, or maybe find out some other way to cover these fees. So that's what we're kind of looking at right now. I know there are a lot of questions, so if you have any now, I can try to answer them, or we can open them up to the public.
I have a question rather than that. I don't know if it's for you, Andrea, but maybe for Clinton or Krista. In our packet, the impact on our budget is going to be 50 to 19 grand or so, to be found in general fund, and it's not budgeted. Y'all have an idea where that can come from?
I can actually answer that. So I did run budget numbers yesterday. Those numbers were based off the $13 an hour we were paying, so those numbers are going to be a little bit higher. But we have some savings in our full-time and part-time budget because we've been understaffed most of the year, so I think we'll have savings to cover that in our part-time and full-time salaries, and then we also have some savings on a couple other projects.
Excellent, so we can, we can take the hit on that ourselves, and it won't impact vote requirement then?
I hope not, yeah.
I would like a little better, Chris, can you tell me?
Well, it depends a lot on, are we gonna, are we only going to get five lifeguards that are going to staff park pool in the mornings? Are we going to get enough lifeguards to staff town pool in the mornings as well? If we get just the five for park pool, we can handle it. If we start getting three or four or five more that want to work town pool in the mornings, which we're not seeing yet that right now, then there may be some extra expense that, that we would maybe have to make a budget.
Well, let's say that we did need to go over what you're proposing at the same that your department.
We might have to give something up, Mayor. We're actively looking at that. We might even borrow from another general fund budget to cover that cost. Again, we're taking a look at that currently.
So your first impulse is to find it within general fund, if we might find the savings or redirection.
Right, and as Andrea mentioned, we are, we've already identified a few areas where we do have savings that could be applied to this one time.
If it won't require a budget amendment is really my question.
That's correct, thank you.
Questions, Council?
Andrea, just to clarify, it's five individuals, and the timeframe was 7:30 to 11:30?
7:30 to 11:30. So we would get there at 7:30, check chemicals, get things ready, so they could open up at 8, and run till about 11 or 11:15, so it'd be about four hours.
And they're also very competitive wages, I mean, we're just trying to put an advertisement out there that some qualified candidates, and the city will train them for, I believe it was a two-day timeframe.
So it's 16 hours a class in person, and then they have to also do some homework beforehand, some pre-workout set stuff. But yes, it's a 16-hour class. Right now, we're aiming for next Monday, Tuesday. We were hoping for yesterday and today, but everyone that expressed interest couldn't make the class if we had held it yesterday and today. So now we're working with all of these kids. Haley's on the phone right now as we speak, trying to see if they can make a class next Monday and Tuesday.
How many kids have shown interest?
We've had about eight or so, but we do compete heavily with our other availability because many of the individuals have a job already. This would be an additional job for them.
Okay. Is there, my thinking is if we can get as many as we can and staff both pools, that would be optimal.
That would be great, but the Wellness Center was doing classes in the mornings out at Town Pool, and we were, we were getting it really going at Town Pool, so I hate to see it sitting there not being used. So if we could get the lifeguards for that, that'd be optimal. They could also help with splashback chemical checks, too.
That'd be great.
So current plan is to get lifeguards out at the park pool for 7:30 to 11:30, and then, what is it, 12 to 30 or?
Then we open at 1 to 6:30, everything but Tuesday at Park Pool, and everything but Monday at Town Pool. And then they have that, we do some cleaning between 12 and 1, or then take much breaks.
And then the, the Create Healthy class that was out there for, at Park, I'm sorry, at Town Pool, for those, I think it's weeks, six or eight weeks, are they now going to be out at Park Pool, or are they still going to be at Town Pool?
So at this time, the Wellness Center has expressed interest in using their own facility. They do have the capability of making those adjustments, but obviously, if we can't get additional staff, we will definitely open that up to them again.
So we believe that we can solve the problem of providing the programming as expected to these organizations. We'll take the financial hit because it was our oops, and we're doing the right thing by requiring our lifeguards for these things because of our insurance and because of, it's just the right thing on behalf of the city. We think we can solve this problem with this additional money for lifeguards, working with these organizations, and letting them carry on their program as they expected.
That is our hope, yes. I, I think we can do Park Pool for sure, as sure as anything is.
So you have some questions about the Town?
Town Pool is if we can get those eight kids. Even if we can get seven, we can supplement some from our afternoon students. The problem is a lot of our afternoon guards already have commitments in the morning, so it'll kind of be here and there. But if we can get seven, I think we can get both pools open and then supplement from the afternoons. That's not to say there may not be a day or two during the summer where we don't have enough, but we're going to do our best.
Okay. I, I know that, and I, I appreciate that. I'm just wanting to, if we were going to move this, to go ahead and approve the additional funding, would that address the issues of these people's programs, and they would be able to fulfill them as expected?
Yes, they'd just be delayed.
Be a little late, I understand, because we, we came to the table late with this new requirement, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other question? All right, folks who are here to speak on this, I'm, I'm happy to allow you to. However, do I get a sense that, well, would you give me your comments, please, Council, about how you feel about this issue, or we call it revoked? Am I missing anything from anybody else in terms of information? Yeah, John? Yeah, and, and so, and that was the question I directed, and Schmidt, was for you all to be able to fulfill your commitments, and that there's no glitch in the city's apartment. Why don't you come on up?
What's the other option? I've, what, 8 o'clock or what? John?
Okay, I stand, sorry. John, come on up.
Well, some of my questions answered, I gave you some slides.
I don't want to shut anybody down, but
No, but, but I'm just going to go through this very quickly, because I also think it's important for you to understand the scope of what we're talking about and what's important. So I gave you, I handed out slides, you all saw them. You know, there's about three groups that are affected. You've got the hot swimming team, which has normally 50 kids all year round, 70 during the summer. You have 120 kids in Swim America. A lot of them are learning to swim for the first time. It's a safety issue. We also have master swimming, which are adults that exercise and compete. And then the Wellness Center does have the Learn to Swim camp, they need help with. You know, we made these, oh, this quickly, we made all these commitments in good faith, and now we're finding that, you know, it's going to potentially cost us negative money losing proposition, pardon my language, right given. So we've been working out at the Wellness Center to give us two lanes, there's six to seven kids in each lane, while two to three little old ladies walk up and down the rest of the pool. And one of the things I looked at, the recreational, the uses of the two pools, they're really not being, they're being underutilized, to me. At the max, it looked to me like there's, last year, about 120 swimmers, Lady Bird, and about 40 at Town. So I was thinking if there's a way to consolidate, save money, and take care of all the kids, because I think everybody could fit into either one of the pools, all the recreational swimmers. And of course, what we'd like to do is just lease the pool and provide our own insurance, have an agreement with the city that would hold, hold the city harmless, and use Lady Bird the way we've been using it. And then my, our, our biggest concern is it will take a week or two to provide, to find the lifeguards, to fulfill the need. Meanwhile, we're already missed two weeks, Swim America, and we're likely to be missing them. That's our biggest, biggest concern right now. Any questions for me?
Well, I think we under, I think, I'll speak myself, I understand the dilemma, that there was a change in regulations from the city that, that put the monkey wrench into the program, and that they'll be at the land and so forth. I'm not willing to adjust our requirements based on insurance needs, even though we came to that late. And we'll take the oops and pay for, pay more money for lifeguards and do our best to attract lifeguards and so forth. But the, but we do have to have city hired, trained lifeguards when our pools are being used. So we want to try to find a compromise here for the situation. It may not be exactly what one party or the other wants, I'm just saying we're trying to find a compromise.
I just hope that you'll give it priority and not go through the normal bureaucratic process.
Okay.
And the other thing I would, would hope is perhaps we could form a committee to look at the pool situations during the fall, because it looks like to me that these are money pits for the city.
I love meeting with citizens who have a special interest to talk about how we can help them accomplish their work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Dr. Candy, did you want to speak? Go ahead. I'm, I'm going to ask you to come to the podium, we need to get you on record, in case, in case you're in witness perfectionary.
It's really a legal issue. Can we do a compromise, address the attorney? Could we do a compromise where you carve out a specific contract for the lifeguards at the Wellness Center, who are the best in the city, because they actually train the city lifeguards? Could you do a specific contract that allows them to be employed by the city, and all they do is, when they are there, they are covered because they're city employees? You could pay them a dollar a month. But then, you know, when they aren't there, the city lifeguards can be there. That would cut down on the number of city lifeguards you need. And they, the trouble is at the moment, Andrea's got no option but to put them in the rotation of the city lifeguards, because they're actually employees of the city. If they were just specifically employed to, to, to do the programs for the kids, you, as I say, you'd save on city lifeguards, but then also the city would be covered because they're employed by the city as well. So they've got dual, dual employment. Wellness Center, which is full-time, they can't do the rotations of the city lifeguards, and then they would also be employed by the city. Is that a, is that a, something you could look at?
Well, this is the first time I've been asked that, and I sure look at it, but you understand that the lifeguard has to be in a lifeguard station when they're serving as a lifeguard, not in a pool. You understand that?
Yeah.
Not a swimming instructor, which is a different certification, whether they have lifeguard certification or not. Lifeguards must be in a lifeguard station, even during lessons.
Can they be standing?
They have to be in a lifeguard station. And when we talk about risk management and water safety?
Yes.
That includes fully equipped lifeguards within proper stations with proper time limit periods. I don't know how long these folks are working, but you know, they're 50-minute max for lifeguard sign.
Right, right.
So they would have to follow all those rules, including being in a lifeguard station and not in the water with people.
Okay, if they could satisfy that, because they're actually not in the pool, most of the instructors, if they could satisfy that, could you do a specific limited contract, do you think?
Well, I don't know what the city's policy would be for hiring in part-time employees in lifeguard, but I can sure
Okay, that's all I wanted to say, that's maybe an option, thank you.
Okay. Liz, did you want to speak? Liz Thomas?
Actually, I'm part of, I'm just curious.
Well, I, I want to make sure that you all who are doing this programming here that we really appreciate what you do for the kids, for this community. It's extraordinary, and it makes this town what it is. So we want to try to make that happen. We're in a, between a rock and a hard place a bit, and we're trying to do everything we can as the city to address this appropriately, and get through this summer, and then we'll all start with better expectations and better performance in next summer. But we are going to take the financial hit to try to increase our lifeguard appeal. I remember being mayor in 2006, '07, and '08, Jimmy Alexander was the director of the Parks and Recreation, and guess what one of the issues was during the summer? We can't find lifeguards. So this is not a new problem, but it is becoming more intense with the additional use of these programs, I mean, the expansion of these programs, and the wonderful pool that we did several years ago. Mr. Cornet, Cody?
Yes, sir, I second everything that I did, just it, urge you all really for part of this, I, to America, for you, it really is, it is a money issue for the city, but it really isn't, it started to take about hundreds, thousands, and now from a big place to not have to be grounded, that is far out.
I understand, and I'm compelled by that argument, however, we are responsible for the dollars and cents, so that's just a question we have to ask to refine, but yeah, we're willing to do that. I, I'm willing to do that, the, the council has not voted yet. I'm willing to do that on the basis of this new requirement, which is to say is good for the city. Any further comment on this?
I have a question on the impact. So Swim America had to cancel their lessons this week, correct? And then swim team had to cancel it this week and the week prior, or y'all are just using the two lanes? So, good for Wellness Center, okay. So next week, is that, are, are we ready to, are we going to be ready by next week?
So we have, if we have the class Monday and Tuesday, then we have to go through an orientation with all the guards, and get them on city payroll. So we're looking at maybe next Thursday or Friday, but realistically, I talked to Jeremy the following Monday to 19. So swim lessons can start on the 19.
Is there any way to make that up?
My kids are scheduled for next week, so, thank you.
Excuse me, Jill.
To make up the weeks we've missed?
I don't know.
Don't know.
So when we say delay, it's not necessarily adding on these weeks to the end of summer, which they're just lost. That's lost revenue for the teams, and odds are it's going to be harder to get kids rescheduled since.
I know we have lifeguards that are starting practices and things at the end of July, so we're going to be pushing it to make it to the end of July with the lifeguards because of so many other commitments they have.
Andrea, can we get updates on, on the progress of this?
Okay, the question, and one time John and I visited, was that they had qualified lifeguards in, in the team, but can they get hired part-time by the city?
Absolutely, that's something, that's something we've talked to both groups as well. If they have lifeguards, or if they have instructors that want to be trained as lifeguards, we can absolutely train them, and then they'll be on the, they'll be city lifeguards, though, so they'll have to be in the lifeguard stands, and then also attend our in-service training that we have to do required by the state. So we can do that. It would cut back on the number of instructors they have, but that's absolutely an option. Now, they have to be 15.
But they have to follow the city regulations.
Correct, yes.
There's no reciprocity, because I know they've already been trained.
No, they have to be. If they're American Red Cross, which Caitlin actually trains all of our lifeguards, and she actually trained the Wellness Center lifeguards last year, too. So if they're already American Red Cross lifeguards, they don't have to be retrained by us. They can, we can just get their copy of their certification, and they can go through our interview process, and then orientation and be hired.
Mr. McCamey, in the agreement on exclusive license agreement, there's an insurance limits. Just a question, is this common these days in your experience? 500,000 per person and a million per occurrence?
Well, I'm not really an expert on the limits, Mayor, but that is
Well, I'm not really an expert on the limits, Mayor, but that is pretty common from the ones we've observed of the cities. Some are million minimum.
Those are a million per occurrence?
Yes.
Okay. Would you be comfortable with, would your advice be that you'd be comfortable with that, we pass this exclusive agreement?
Yes.
All right, let's take a motion on this non-exclusive license agreement with the program, programs and then city park pools for pool use, and consider waiving lifeguard reimbursement in twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion's second. Any further discussion? On further the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, all of you who do what you do. I'll give you a second if you want to get it back your day, or if you want to continue to bask in our brilliance, that's fine. All right, we'll go to, let's go to our item eight D. Let's do the allocation of the hotel occupancy tax. Oh, well, a lot of people, all right, we'll take. Folks, if you wouldn't mind moving on out quickly and quietly, I appreciate it. Continue your discussion out there, we're still in session. Thank you, thank you for being here. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll continue now with item eight D. Consider the allocation of the twenty twenty-three hotel occupancy tax funds. Do we need any setup for this, or are we ready to start discussing?
We're going, line item, set.
I'm going to ask how you'd like to do this. Counsel, any, any opening?
Well, I think a reminder that this is out of the abundance of our hotel occupancy taxes, that we are able to give this away, and we had budgeted five hundred thousand, but it sounds like that's a bit fluid. So until we decide on how much we're giving away, I don't think we should be hemming and hawing at these until, I mean, it just.
It's not hemming and hawing, I don't want to.
Well, we budgeted five hundred thousand, are we going to try to get down to that number? Or what is the number that we're comfortable with?
Let me share with you that Randy has done a, and he shared it with me, a, a new chart, and, and he went with the percentages. Of course, there were some items we wanted to certainly keep, so I don't know if Randy's willing to share that with anyone.
Yeah, yeah, just real quick, I mentioned this early on, is we're roughly close to three hundred thousand over the allocation, Emily's, our counsel person Emily's referring to. So I effectively took a look at, can I say this respectfully, everyone getting a bit of a haircut to get to that five hundred thousand dollars, and then looking at the puts and takes. And I don't know Emily's priorities here, and I'm not going to speak for anyone's priorities, but what I tried to do is go back into it, and if you look at just, just the advertising and promotional budget, I counted it all up, comes to about four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, it's a pretty big chunk of that, and that's just the asks. Then I broke down the arts, it was a much, much smaller number, and then I went to historic preservation and restoration, and that comes up to three hundred and twenty-three thousand. So I think it comes down to personal philosophy at that point, but what I tried to do is the most important thing, I think that we can do, and I talked about this in twenty eighteen, visioning, is protect, preserve, and those historic assets that we have for our town for generations to come. That's so important in my mind. The, the events that bring tourists to town are important as well, so you're, I'm trying to balance. So, but my heart and head goes towards preserving those historic assets and making sure that we still provide dollars to the events that bring tourists to our town, so I'll be quiet at that point.
No, that's great, and I think it's helpful to remember that the Texas Legislature allows up to fifty percent of all hot revenue to go towards historic preservation for what our population is. Fifteen percent can be for the arts. Well, the CBB takes five, we give them five sevenths of our pot, and then we're left with the two sevenths, and then of that, we have allocated some for historic purposes in the maintenance and operation of Mark Plotts. I don't think anything else goes for the arts. So what are the, I guess we could look at, what are the numbers of all the seven sevenths that are given away? What's half of that? That's the amount that could go to historic. We've talked to the CBB, and they don't budget in that way to say, you know, this advertising goes towards historic, or this is preservation. So it's, we can't really compare apples to apples.
Yeah, back to the state requirement, Shelley, to be honest, there's no limit on advertising, percentage-wise. So out of the five hundred K, two hundred K is historic preservation, fifty percent the arts, and then advertising, frankly, be whatever number. Yeah, okay, so. Sorry.
Well, it's fifty percent of the entire receipts, all the receipts from hotel tax, seven sevenths, even though we have seven.
Well, my quick spreadsheet shows that we're not in any jeopardy of exceeding our limits on historic reservation or the arts with the requests they're given, even if we funded them almost fully, which I'm not inclined to do. I'm in the same place you are. Well, let's do this, Counsel, if we could, move this forward. We've had twenty, we had twenty-nine requests, and one we, we dismissed because it was a for-profit organization. We, by practice, decided that we would designate these funds for nonprofit organizations to support them, Fredericksburg. Let me start with this, Counsel, and please take me any direction you want, I just want to make sure we don't get too bogged down, if you've already made some decisions. Are there any of these twenty-eight that you would recommend first that we fully fund or request?
So the closest I have to that is, so the short answer is no, so I'll pause there and give a follow-up.
Okay.
I think the Nimitz is close, right?
The Nimitz is very close, General, what, what, because we looked at, I asked the question, is the command post a historic building, and your response was it is. So I think, again, the preservation of that asset's important. Fortunately, I borrowed some money from your marketing to help make that happen now, so it's a bit of a wash, but that's just my recommendation.
Well, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, that I felt I would propose to fund fully. I've applied for hot money for lots of years through nonprofit organizations in Fredericksburg, and I always believed that the council should make the decision, one, based on a, an amount that they had budgeted, to try to find a, a good way to distribute the money as per budget, unless there was a very compelling reason to go over budget on this. But also, I wanted the council to recognize that there are organizations that truly do a very good job year by year, fulfilling the requirements of the statute to bring people in to spend the night, and have very profound ways of showing that, either through some surveys, or taking data from the people who participated and so forth. My recommendation, and this is where we are, I'm talking about fully funding. The Nimitz at their ten, ten thousand for the command post windows, having worked at Pioneer for a long time, I know how expensive it is to deal with, with the historic buildings, and that's kind of a low number for windows, actually. Hundred and forty thousand for the Nimitz, they always do a great job with that. Twelve thousand for the Chamber Christmas Parade, they proved that they do well. Ten thousand for the Food and Wine Fest, ten thousand for the Craft Beer Festival, which is a new festival bringing in people. Ten thousand for the Oktoberfest, three thousand for the Flavery Event, and ten thousand for the Golf Tournament for H C U C. Discussion about it. Would you, would you have, I don't know what that number is. My total budget is four hundred and ninety-eight thousand one minute.
Good job.
Thank you. And I didn't have to work hard.
I think one thing that I, I mentioned last time, that I, I wanted to look at, is more targeted outreach. I feel like a lot of these groups are on their own doing advertising, and they could probably get a better market buy if they worked through the CBB. So my priorities are more in line with things that are promoting arts and historic preservation directly, instead of ones that are chiefly for advertising.
Okay.
So, but I, I don't have any particular issues with.
Okay. One other large comment, and I'll turn it over to you. The others I reduced by anywhere from half to, to, well, up to half. And the reason for that is because hot is supposed to be a path to something, especially for these organizations that are having the same thing every year, for you to find other ways to support your, your business, even advertising, without hot money. Move on to, to other uses for your money, or finding other ways. My goal, as long as I'm able to make decisions, is to start looking for tourism fund money to do bigger things in the city that, that are going to be required, and benefiting the town in different ways from these wonderful hot funds that are coming into town. That's a broad statement of my philosophy, moving farther. But some of these, and, and I, I know that small amounts mean a lot, but if, if I were going to fu- fully fund the ones I just mentioned, and then cut the others, then I have some reasonability about how to cut them. And so generally, it was half. A couple of other things, and then I'll, I'll ask for your comments. The Fort Martin, the former Texas Rangers Foundation has requested two, two, made two requests in the amount of twenty-five. We had a contract with the former Texas Rangers Foundation to, not a small amount, to work on Fort Martin Scott for us, and that contract went askew about May or April of last year. It was enacted in November of twenty-one, and it was for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the tourism fund, for a two-year contract, one seventy per year, correct? Okay. I pursued the work done pursuant to that contract, and discovered that they were not fulfilling it to the satisfaction of the contract. And so I'm not disposed to give them anything with regard to hot money, because we continued to pay them a hundred and seventy thousand dollars last year through work that we were asking them to do, that they were not able to demonstrate they did. And this was through meetings and letters that I shared with them. I, I wish them all the best, but I believe that under the circumstances that we provided a hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of tourism fund for a contract that did not work, I'm not inclined to propose anything.
So were there any deliverables at all out of that hundred and seventy K?
That's done.
I'm going to represent, my understanding is no. There was supposed to be a hired person to run the, they were going to do interpretation and some other things. That person, that the contract was largely established on, the contract was enacted in November, they quit in May, and there was never any replacement. And a lot of that money, a hundred and seventy thousand, was toward that person's salary to provide that interpretation for. Where did the budget go? They didn't fulfill services. We did not request the, we just told them that we were not funding the second year, but we did not make any requests for reimbursement, is that correct?
That's correct, and they, they did fulfill their obligations with that staff person for several months before he left. They were not able to replace the position, they were doing some of the general maintenance, not upkeep for the, for the contract specifically. But again, as the mayor mentioned, we did not renew that contract, that was a decision that was made in the budget process last year. We've taken the motions out of the equation here, that they didn't fulfill the contract, they terminated for whatever reasons, partway into the year, we should have sent a request, requesting a refund of those additional funds, prorated, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Well, I, yeah, and part of my deal is, is I agree that we need to reduce, and I'm actually reducing it to fifteen or fourteen thousand dollars, but I still think they're, a tourist attraction in this community, they're certainly well-known and well-respected, and that they still serve as a, an attraction here in the community, so that's why I, I kind of think they need to have some money for advertising.
I hear you, Tony. I also think they are part of a bigger organization that statewide, they hired Lieutenant Colonel Allen West to help raise money for them. I think they have other ways of raising money for advertising.
Good, but that could be said for every group.
Any preference for locals?
Well, I'm, and I use this as an example of the Gillespie County Wild Game Dinner does not ask for any funds, because they make money, and they use their own money for advertising. They don't believe that they need to use the tax, hotel tax money.
Okay, then we'll get to your recommendation on that soon. If we go to the larger requests here, comments on the Nimitz, one forty for advertising and ten for participation.
I had budgeted the full one forty on the Nimitz and, and half on the windows, again, just for budgetary reasons, we could reswizzle that and give them full three thousand to restore the windows, but I would probably take the rest of the fifteen hundred dollars back out of the one forty.
So taking their aggregate of one fifty to what?
Total I had is, yeah, one forty, one fifty.
I'm fine with both requests at a, at ten and one forty.
Well, I'm good, too. All right, so we'll, we'll check that for now. The next big one is the CME Church, the building of the children's school replica, request was for sixty-five, well, actually it was larger, but they got forty-five from the county.
So that would be ninety-two, if you take their one-ten request for the building, and then twenty-seven thousand for the landscaping.
Right.
So that's one thirty-seven minus the county's forty-five thousand, it's ninety-two.
So you have a plugged-in number of what?
Ninety-two thousand.
Ninety-two, and is that your recommendation today?
Yes.
Chris, are you keeping up with this?
Yeah, it's just thirty-five. Ninety-two thousand.
Ninety-two for the CME Church Children's, and that is for the remainder balance of their hundred and ten proposal for building the children's school replica, plus landscaping, minus the county's contribution. All right, so what number did you want? Well, no, no, let's get, let's go to the next big one, restoration for the Historical Society on the.
Yensky.
Yensky House, the request was for two hundred thousand.
So my observation, again, this goes back to Mr. Cornerstone of our community from a historic perspective, is to restore that building to its original state, and I, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor to invest in, in doing that. Now, whether we can do the full two hundred based upon these other votes a moment ago might be questionable, but in my mind, it's one of the major priorities.
I take your point, Randy, about the restoration, the importance of that. I'm troubled by the organization wanting to fund the entire project with hot, which is three hundred thousand.
Right.
And I spoke with the ED yesterday about this, and also the pitch was the, that it was going to be an education center, and specifically a long-distance education center, education center hub, very similar to what the Nimitz has. And I said I would have preferred to have seen some more hard plan for that, rather than. rather than preserving the building just so it doesn't fall down. Because the, what goes on the inside is another huge expense.
It is.
So I would like to see the Historical Society have more, um, responsibility for, for raising money for that project. Because they did receive a hundred thousand last year.
Right. So I had a conversation also with the E D on this yesterday. And, uh, Monty's not able to quantify what that additional investment would look like yet. But again, in fairness, what I did is I took the number and I tried to apply if the potential is to raise an additional thirty, forty thousand dollars for private funds, would a hundred and thirty-five thousand from the city help achieve that goal? That's where I came up.
I agree with the mayor. I'd like to see something more definite. Uh, the plans we saw last year, essentially it was a couple offices, a restroom, a break room, and a boardroom, and.
I think that's been revised up. I mean, when I talked to the E D.
I haven't seen that, and I think we should see that before we we approve this.
So is there a number? Anybody's got?
I have like a hundred.
Emily, you're suggesting a hundred? All right, I'm gonna plug that in for now.
Yeah.
All right, let's go to, um, this county, uh, country schools. Uh, country schools, um, no, no, let's do the Fair Association first, sixty-five thousand. They did not, uh, apply to the county this year, correct? Anybody here? Fair Association?
It said it was a staffing.
I think they said that they, it just got followed through the cracks. Anybody know? Anybody here knows? Okay. Do I remember that right?
Yeah.
They said we just missed it.
It's a trap.
Okay. So they're asking for sixty-five, which is a pretty routine request from them in my experience to, and it was specifically, they, they pretty much put horse races in there, didn't they?
Right.
This specific. Anybody have a suggestion on that number?
I'm fine with it.
The challenge I'm having is if we're, we're voting on these, you know, I I'm concerned we're gonna run out of budget for the other areas. That's, you know, what I did is I went back to the twenty-twenty allocation. I think they were at forty-five. Uh, they received forty-five and then jumped to sixty-five. Maybe there's additional activities that went under that umbrella. I'm not sure. But I saw, I saw that as a pretty sizable jump. So I was at closer to forty, back to forty-five.
Well, irrespective of your comment, I'll tell you that I do know they bring in people for those horse races. Because they've asked me to go out there and sing the Star Spangled Banner every year. And I mean, I, it's hat. And they're mostly people, well, there are a lot of people from somewhere else.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if this is, but they're sure they're, uh, betting on the horses. So I have a forty-five number here. Anybody want to raise that?
Actually, I'm about forty-five square inch.
That's fine, because we have to remember they're not getting around twenty from the.
Let's plug in forty-five, Krista. Now let's go to the country schools. Their request is forty-five, six eighty-five, a very specific number. Here's where I, my heart tug goes with the restoration. Because when I was at the museum, I understood that at one time, Queston County had more country schools than any other place in the state. Maybe the country, I don't know. But, um, those little country schools are pretty cool. And they, and because they don't have organizations all up around to keep them up, we either decided to just let them fall apart or we, we continue to preserve them. And, and I know it's a good organization. I know it's well-run. Um, so just because I wanted to use a lot of zeros, I said forty.
Wait, let's try that one.
Yeah. You like that? Okay. What other big number do we have? Is that, is that all the big ones?
Theater company is fifty.
Say again?
The theater company is fifty thousand. Number seventeen. The Fredericksburg Theater Company is.
The theater company?
Fifty thousand.
They still around?
Don't have to leave.
Yeah. Fifty thousand was the request. Um, this is where I got into shaving. This is where I got into haircuts. But I, but what's your, what's your?
So I don't know the balance sheet, so I don't know what the take is on tickets and sales, but they do generate revenues. So I'm welcome. I'd like somebody to educate me on how substantial that is. But they're making money on it. I go back looking at a couple of years prior, brought this up last time. They were at thirty thousand in twenty-twenty, went to forty thousand, I think, uh, awarded, uh, and then fifty. So I'm, I'm just, the puts and takes are what I'm thinking about it here. If you're generating money, then help me understand a little bit better.
I, I agree. I'd like to see, um, a more comprehensive report on their out-of-town. Not, not attendance, but how, how do they demonstrate that they, people stay overnight? But, um, I, this is where I really started shaving. But it was, it was a bit arbitrary because I didn't have any other data to go on. Um, and I cut that in half. What do y'all think?
I was at thirty.
See, clearly this is all arbitrary. We're, we're doing the best we can.
We admit that.
We can try with thirty, see how that shakes out.
Plug in thirty?
Yeah.
And that counts as the arts, right? Or does it?
That is an arts.
I think they listen under advertising promotion and arts.
All right, um, how about the ones that, uh, are fairly new to us this year? Well, are new to us this year. That's the bottom three. Flavory, the unit, um, well, Flavory, oh, the Peach Jamboree, that's it.
Peach Jamboree.
Peach Jamboree, the Flavory, and the Frontier History Company. Let's talk about Stonewall Peach Jamboree. Their request, excuse me, request is fifteen. They received twenty from the county.
So this is where, again, I applied the, the, the scout that we had to take it down to. We certainly want to work with our, our partners in the community and the county as well. Uh, but I, I came down to ten.
I, I would agree too.
Let's try that.
Uh, Flavory, uh, three thousand for their holiday fundraiser. I'm only mentioning, and not numbers, we're going to new requests.
I'm on the board so I can vote on that.
Actually, actually, I think if clarification you can, because it's nonprofit, you're not a paid board member, so legally you can vote if you like.
If he had, he makes it thirty.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Welcome back.
Three thousand, okay?
Three's great.
The, um, uh, Frontier History Company, uh, they did submit a, um, budget in their supplementary documents. I was a little concerned that there was so much for the theater company there and thought that, um, theater company wouldn't consider more of their fee as a cost of doing business through shows because it's a production cost. That's just me.
We try for ten?
I had a five thousand.
Where were you at, Emily?
I just said ten, but five's great.
What'd you have?
About seventy-five.
Eight thousand, but.
Okay, well, let's do.
I kind of feel like we're at an auction right now.
We are, but we are. You know a better way? Okay, I'm gonna put ten. And then we'll see where we are with this. Okay, um, do you have any response to my, um, the numbers that I said I would, I would find fully if it was just me? Christmas Parade, Wine Fest, um, Craft Beer, Oktoberfest, and the golf tournament for the University Center. Did you want to shave that?
No, I'm fine with that.
I know.
Just a question. I'm always looking at it, revenues being generated, so, um, you know, I love Rotary, please look at your mark. But there's sales taking place there as well. Do we have any idea what those receipts might look like? From the beer festival, is, is that all charity? Is that all a charity?
Uh, no, it is not. It is not. So there are some proceeds. Beer Festival? Anybody know? Anybody here for that? Is that a, is that a, um, charity?
Hundred, hundred percent.
Okay, okay.
That, that is my question.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, thank you. Then, then I'm fine with that.
Okay, let's keep them for now. So Krista, did you get that list that for now we're keeping plugged in full, full funding request? Krista?
Can you say them again?
All I need is a, no. All right, so, um, the others are very, very small, but I wanted to get your, your impression about the, uh, former Texas Rangers Foundation. What was your recommendation?
Zero.
Zero. I, I'd say, what, fourteen thousand?
I, you know, based, you know, I'm, I'm conflicted to be honest, based on what you told me, Mayor, but, uh, we were at seven thousand.
For the total, for the two total. Okay. I'm gonna keep my zero in there off of seven there. All right, then we've got some very small ones. Um, and all of them are good people. All of them do good work. I, I would still like to see better support for their, um, what they believe happens with their events. Does anybody hear from the Film Society? Film Festival? I was gonna say the legislature passed, this session passed a, uh, a bill to support Film Festival to a certain degree through grants. And I wondered if that had ever been accessed. All right, so, folks, we have these, these, uh, all right, let's just go over here. Ma Jong, what you have? Uh, Boys, Girls Club. Three.
I put down fifteen.
Full?
Yes.
What'd you say, Randy?
I, I put down fifteen. This is one of the areas.
I think two.
How about fifteen eighty-five?
Seventeen five, my final one.
What'd you have?
I had three.
You had full? Yep, okay. We'll put full. We'll see what that does. Cherry Mountain Club, twenty-three ninety. Cherry Mountain Community Club.
What number is that?
That's a, uh, restoration number four.
We had two thousand.
That work?
Yeah.
Okay, put two there.
I'm fine.
The, the Cunslar Art Show, for, a request is forty-five hundred.
Full. We have cut some still?
Yep.
Say three.
I was at three.
Three's great.
I, I know they do great work, but, um, yeah, I'd like to see more documentation. For three. Art Guild, I'm concerned about operational expenses that they've applied for. Their, their request is sixty-three eighty.
I thought four.
I meant four.
I meant four as well. Rocket Program, five grand is the request?
Full.
I think, I think it's a great program. I strongly agree.
Farmers Market, six thousand?
I think that's one of the best community things that we have here. I'd say absolutely.
Well, I agree. That's not my test.
I would still say full.
Any, any further comment about full?
We could care that one maybe to five.
Say again?
Five.
Okay. Two for five. I'll go, okay, J C's Crawfish Festival, request twenty-five.
Twenty.
Support objection?
Twenty's good.
Music Club, Music Club, um, five thousand?
This increases because they can use the money for artists.
Right, that's correct, isn't it, Mr. McCamey? That, uh, Music Club can, uh, pay artist fees for their, for their events.
Yes, they can pay producers and artists.
Okay.
Yeah.
Full?
Yeah.
German Choirs?
Full.
Full. Good. Uh, Film Society, eight thousand?
I'm, I think that's a great organization. I, I vote for full.
I was at five.
I'd probably go five.
Given the grant situation, maybe we could lower it.
Well, I don't know, Emily, I don't know if the grants are available now. I mean, they applied, it would be for next year or whenever. I'm just saying that, uh, I noticed that they specified Film Festival. What do you think?
They do bring in a lot of people.
Do they?
Yes, they do.
They didn't document it, does. Did they?
I was just looking. I didn't see.
What was your number, Randy?
I was at five.
Let's plug it in, see. Yeah. Turkey Truck Fundraiser, the Mom Center, request is three.
Okay.
I.
Three.
All right. And the golf tournament, well, okay.
We did that.
We did that. All right, so Krista?
The total is?
Let me, let me double-check my numbers here from based on our conversation. Nimitz Foundation, request ten thousand. Request one forty, uh, award one forty. Uh, being Boys and Girls Club, three thousand. Cherry Mountain Community Club, two thousand. The C M E Church, ninety-two thousand. The Cunslar, three. We're leaving Texas Rangers Foundation open for now. Four thousand, Art Guild. Full Chamber Christmas Parade, twelve. The Rocket in twenty-twenty-three, full at five thousand. Farmers Market, cut just a little bit at five. Food and Wine Fest, full at ten. Junior Chamber Commerce, uh, Profits Festival, shaved a bit to twenty. Music Club, full at five. Rotary Club Craft Beer Festival, full at ten. F T C shaved to thirty. Country Schools, forty. German Choirs, full at fifteen hundred. Fair Association shaved to forty-five. Historical Society Restoration at one hundred. Film Society, five. Mom Center Turkey Trot, three. Oktoberfest, full at ten. Peach Jamboree shaved a bit to ten. Flavory, full at three. University Center Golf Tournament, full at ten. Frontier History at five.
Krista, I don't think, did you move the ten over?
Yeah. And the Frontier History at five. And we are at five eighty-three, eighty-three thousand over our budget. So at this point, any particular request you want to drill down on? Do you want to agree to keep it at five hundred, or do you want to go ahead and, and, um, add the eighty-three five? Are you comfortable with these numbers? Where are you?
One thing on the Christian Methodist Episcopal Church, we could take that down a little more if we take out the twenty-seven thousand for landscaping.
Okay.
So we, we also have a, a, an individual that's willing to do some advertising and marketing on behalf of C M E to raise private funds as well.
Right.
So I don't know, I can't quantify that dollar yet, but I do have somebody willing to spend marketing money.
And this is, the request is for preservation, though. I don't think it's any for advertising.
No, she would argue, or she would advertise in our local paper to drive private donations to help the C M E.
So I, so are you, are you recommending, Emily, to reduce that by a twenty-seven or so, twenty or something?
Just a way to get closer to five.
I would agree with that. It's landscaping could be next year.
So sixty-five? Yeah, if they get that building built, it won't be, we don't be ready for landscaping right away, will it? All right, um, any of the other numbers you wanna, I'm comfortable with this personally.
So, so it looks like we're at four fifty.
I'm sorry, Jenny, I asked a question and interrupted. Sorry.
So, what's that drop us down to four fifty? I mean, five fifty?
Show us our, show us our, uh, number, because we're, we're walking.
Five fifty-six. So that fifty-six K over, that comes out of, we do have some general, uh, additional.
Does anybody want to re-address the issue of the former Texas Rangers Foundation?
Well, I'm apparently the only one.
Well, I, I had some budget in there. So where do we have them at the moment? At zero?
Yes, oh, we have them zero currently.
I'm struggling.
I still think they're, uh, an attraction to our community. They serve purpose, and they certainly chose to go from Curville to come here.
I would very agree with Tony. I'm not sure that what that amount is, five K, seven K, um, maintain that.
maintain that relationship, I still feel that they should have remunerated us on that budget they didn't use.
Sure. You had said how much? You wanted to give them fifteen total?
Well, I'd even be willing to say, if you want to do seventy-five hundred or something, just to.
So, per vote? Because they've asked for twenty-five.
Maybe five total.
Yeah, I, I would say maybe ten for the vote.
Sixty-five hundred, I'm just kidding. Whatever.
Well, five and five, in other words.
We, we have to have reporting, we have to make sure they're performing. We're gonna.
They had a track record of not having that, that's why I'm not wanting to.
You know, I don't like to be accused of that bill and so forth, but, and, and I was responsible, I was mayor when we brought them to town. It's, it's personally troubling that they've not moved to build their buildings and raise the money they support. Maybe there's all great reasons for that, I felt like they've not been as, diligent in their reporting as I would like for them to be, even when I was there. I'm not trying to punish them, I just am, am looking at the money that we gave them for something that we did not get.
Well, the other part is they do have a new chairman, if I'm not mistaken. Over the last year, right?
Have they changed leadership?
San Antonio, I know he's come by to see me.
Okay, well, let's move this, you want to compromise?
Sure.
Okay, and put in seventy-five hundred, which is a specific half the request. Alright, we'll put seventy-five for one and zero for the other, and they can figure it out.
Right.
Alright, so does it take us two? That takes us to five. Alright, so we, our goal was to keep it in budget, because that's a good thing to do, and we've gone sixty-four thousand over. Can you justify that in your mind with your constituents? You okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, and I want to be clear, it's, as we just were talking about the importance of the pools, this is a separate fund, so it's not that we can use that sixty-four thousand extra and apply it directly to lifeguards.
Right.
Legally, you cannot do that, so, it might appear as if we're letting this go, and we were tighter on.
And we're not farming any future commitments that we have by pulling sixty-four K out of another budget?
Correct, there is a fun balance. I would like for us in the future to actually collect the hot and then disperse it if we're gonna keep doing this, instead of.
Yeah.
This.
I would agree. By the way, Council, we'll vote on this in just a second, but we've had extensive conversations with staff, and also you have done that offline too, about redirecting this process, this, this whole hot, application process, and how they apply for what, and how they report to justify the statutory requirements.
And I, I think we really need to stress the reporting requirements. We don't have the reports, I don't know that we should continue to give them money. Also, if we have a deadline for submitting applications, we need to maintain that, anybody that comes in after the deadline, will qualify, so.
Would y'all like to, I'm sorry.
Alright.
Do y'all like to require any additional, like, budget? Because now we don't, it's just, they have to report if they got it before, but I think it would be helpful if we could see their budget for more specific, how they want to spend it.
And Mick, one question before we vote, and this is just an education question. People spend a lot of their budgets, a lot of these applicants will spend significant dollars of their budget on local newspaper, local radio. And I understand that we do a visitor's guide, is that mailed out? Is the visitor's guide mailed out to people? Might not? Okay. I always thought that that would be considered local, not drawing tourists. Can you tell me what factors we might ought to consider? And it's, it's immaterial to our decision today, it's just for future.
Yeah, the advertising and promotional programs to attract tourists is really designed to bring people into the community, not necessarily into the city limits, but into the community for the purposes of bringing people to the hotels primarily, but also to the events. So, typically local only, advertising is not a proper expenditure at least.
Well, I'm not asking for a local only, because most of them have a mixture.
Right.
And I love her paper, I want it to succeed, but I'm, we're talking about hot money.
Right, and, and the way the wording of the statute is on advertising promotional, it really anticipates that that money would be spent on advertising and promotion that occurs outside, I mean, okay, instead of.
Well, we'll, we'll drill down on that a little more for next year.
Now, remember, we carved out the exception for directional sign.
Yes.
So, that kind of makes it even more clear.
Yes.
In the community, we're only giving directions to the events, we're not promoting the events.
You all ready to move this?
Make motion, we approve the hot tax funding for two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Motion's second to award these hot monies as presented here, and I'll, once we vote, I'll read them off again. All fair of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
You opposed? Alright, so if you're here today with these people, Nimitz Foundation, ten granted, hundred and forty granted, Boys and Girls Club, three thousand granted, Cherry Community, Cherry Mountain Community Club, two thousand granted, CME Church, sixty-five. Your Councillor Art Show, three thousand. Fredericksburg Art Guild, four thousand. Christmas Parade, twelve. Rocket Program, five.
Rangers.
Well, Rangers, zero. I'm sorry, seventy-five hundred, sorry, seventy-five hundred. Thank you. Farmers Market, five. Food and Wine Fest, ten. JC's Crawfish Festival, twenty. Music Club, five. Craft Beer Festival, ten. FTC, thirty. Country Schools, forty. German Choirs, fifteen hundred. Fair Association, forty-five. Historical Society, one hundred. Film Society, five. Mom Center Turkey Trot, three. Oktoberfest, ten. Stonewall Peach Jamboree, ten. Flavory, three. Hill Country University Center Golf Tournament Fundraiser, ten. And Frontier History Company, ten. If you're here for this.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, aye. Did I do that correctly? Thank you. If you're here for this and you'd like to depart, we'll give you a couple of minutes. Thank you. Hello, Ann. Are you going to work for the Nimitz? What are you gonna do? What's we gonna do? Ruth Ann, how are you?
You haven't moved yet.
Oh, hi, Ruth Ann.
Oh, yeah. Welcome.
Jim, okay? Thank you.
They were good visions, right?
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we're moving on. Thank you, Council, I know that's somewhat difficult. We're gonna jump back to seven, I mean, eight C, continue discussion regarding the need for affordable housing.
Thank you.
Sorry? I just said, bless you, Tony.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll jump in on that real quick. Did I say something wrong?
No.
Okay. Oh, okay, sorry. I wish I had my hearing back, but I think I did. Go ahead, Randy.
So I'll throw my comments out here real quick. I'm still very much in the due diligence phase, I'm my end of the equation. We did have James McConnell approach, I think, last time, and talked about Mason and Burnet, Marble Falls area, so I did spend a fair amount of time interviewing and having conversations with both of those agencies, and I'm collecting information, how they work. Do they, are they breaking ground in new projects, or are they maintaining and managing government dollars to subsidize rent? So I'm still working through that. I did have a very promising call with April Norton, who is the head of the Jackson Hole, Wyoming, Teton area on their housing authority, and they have close to a thousand units. I believe it's sixty percent that is owned, so there's a path to ownership, which is important to me, and forty percent is for rent, they're breaking ground on two more properties. I don't know if those are apartments or single family at this point in time, but I'm intrigued and very interested to see how April is doing this, and she's part of a national organization for affordable attainable housing. She's gonna be in Travis County coming up in the next few weeks, I invited her to come out here and spend some time with us and kind of present their business model, how they work, and I think she's gonna accept that, so that's kind of where I'm at the moment, Mayor.
I want to personally thank Councilmember Persner, Emily and I spent, at her arrangement, last week, we spent about three hours with the people who do this in Austin, including the Chief Operating Officer of their housing authority, and their President and CEO of the Housing Authority of the City of Austin, and the Director and some of his staff from the Austin Affordable Housing Corporation, that is a subsidiary of the Housing Authority of the City of Austin. And they showed us their projects in East Austin. Beautiful, well done, well run, and so forth, and so I have lots of collateral here from them, but Emily arranged that, and, and they were just delightful, they, they treated us like old friends, and we had a long, broad-ranging discussion about these things, and were able to express, to define our problem, and what they felt like might be ways to go about addressing it. So I'll have more to say about that later as we go. I will say that one thing we learned from them is that their AMI, their area median income, is a hundred and ten thousand. That's exactly twice what ours is. So they have apartments on the ground there, many of them are sixty percent AMI. Well, that's sixty-six thousand dollars, and ours is obviously half that, if it was sixty percent, it's thirty something. So, it's a little bit apples and oranges, but, but they were very forthcoming, and what I really appreciated, Emily, I'd like you to comment too. What I really appreciated was, they were really open to us expressing our specific issue, our specific problem, and the question, so what would you recommend to us? How would you, what, how would you recommend we move forward? And I was very full of information when I left.
Yes, echo what the mayor said, I think Austin is interesting because LBJ, I guess he was a congressman at the time, and he worked to, to get a lot of the housing authorities off the ground back in nineteen thirty-seven, and he wanted them to be, the city's in alphabetical order, so Austin would get something first, so they say that Austin was the first housing authority. But always good to have some bragging rights in the whole country, but I think it was so helpful to see the developments and to know this is, this is the housing authority component of it, this is what Section Eight for the voucher program entails. This, the, what is compelling to me, just learning about it, they have the Affordable Housing Corporation, which is a public facilities corporation, and they also have the Affordable Housing Finance Corporation, where the, the council is on that board, and that's just a funding mechanism. So there, as we are learning, there are many bites at the apple, and so it's, it was very eye-opening, I have a lot to still learn.
And we, Tony, you have mentioned this before, the, the lady who is the, well, all of them did, but this lady who is the Chief Operating Officer of their housing authority, I've written down, her first comment was, no, this is Michael Pervert, do not give up council authority. And with regard to this issue, do not give up council authority, that was his first advice. And we also, also present was Mandy, is it Mandy?
Mandy DeMayo.
Mandy DeMayo, who's the Director, Deputy Director of what?
The City of Austin's Housing and Planning.
Right, so she's the staff member, but they said the council was very involved in all of these decisions and projects and so forth. So we got a lot of good information, and I appreciate all of you doing your, I know you're doing due diligence to find out more about it, to make sure that the next step is the right one we take, and that it fits Fredericksburg and fits our specific needs. I've also heard from some specific employers in Fredericksburg, and I'll share with you what they've told me. In my quest to answer the specific question, how will this help, tell me what your problem is that we can solve, or that we can attempt to solve, or attempt to partially solve something, and I got a really, really good layout from one of our hospitality employers here, and I'll share it with you, but it was, it was right on target. It's exactly the kind of thing we need to know, as we continue to discuss this, what is our solution? I know there's concern that we continue to kick the can down the road, and someone commented in one of our open meetings that I made a comment when I first ran for mayor in two thousand and six, about we need to, we need to deal with our housing issue, or need to look at it and so forth, yeah. That is not to say that nothing's been done, that no effort has been made, it's just to say we've not found the right, right step to take. But I feel there's some new energy behind this now, and I'm confident in this council that we will continue to do that, and I'll keep it on the agenda.
I just think with Randy, I, I like the idea from Jackson Hole, because I think we have a lot of similarities towards there. You certainly like to hear more from that lady.
Maybe a field trip to Jackson Hole, Randy?
That's what she, that's what she recommends. It's interesting, you know, I think you said Austin was a hundred and ten thousand AMI. There are eighty, eighty-five thousand, and the trajectory of the number of billionaires, they're at five cents on the dollar for taxes, and they have no state income tax, so their models could continue to expand, and I think that they're a few years ahead of us, and we can learn from them.
I just want to encourage you, Council, to keep digging, keep looking, keep asking questions. Vince Michele, did you have some comments you would like to make this morning? Come on up.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning.
I had sent an email to all, all of y'all regarding the changes to the Public Facilities Corporation law that was just passed recently, and primarily with respect to maintaining council control over this. One of the loopholes in that, in that bill was closed, so regardless of who sponsors, in other words, if a housing authority sponsors a public facilities corporation, prior to that, they did not require council's approval for a ad valorem tax exemption. That law has now changed, which it is required, so you would maintain, whether you are the sponsor of the Public Facilities Corporation directly, as, as a municipality can be the sponsor directly, can have appointed or elected officials, a housing authority cannot have appointed elected, elected official, not have elected officials on it, but a housing authority does, and so if it's, if it's majority of appointed officials, it has to come back to city council to get approval. So it doesn't matter who sponsors it anymore, regardless of that, y'all would have the ultimate say, not necessarily on the development, but on the request for the tax exemptions that were being provided to a partnership that would be building a affordable housing development.
Questions to Vince? Well, thank you for your report.
Certainly.
As I, as I mentioned to you via email, the Affordable Housing Report that you filed a year plus ago, was very instructive for me to get back into the game, put some hard numbers around things, and also some ways to assess what our need is.
I think you'll find in the housing study that obviously, it could have been two hundred pages, it was meant to give a preliminary recommendation in a few paragraphs, but I think what you'll find is that most everything that you're coming across in some form or fashion, whether it's a land trust, or what other individuals or housing authorities are doing across the country, in some form or fashion, it was identified in that, and so I'm, I'm, I'm glad that y'all are starting to look and just starting to dive into things specifically. What I would recommend doing, and it's something that you brought up, Mayor, is, I don't think the Housing Authority was ever the housing authority was ever presented as the only scenario. It was merely one of many. And so my recommendation is not only should you be looking at housing authority, but everything that was recommended, recommended on that housing and study should be considered and implemented i- if at all cases, because housing authority will, will support and promote a specific cohort of development. But you have a, a need, you know, very low income, even the moderate income. So taking advantage of every one of those opportunities and housing authority has, somebody's got to run this stuff and administrate it. You guys are busy. I don't know if you want to take on that role directly. So I would think that a housing authority can be really what you want it to be. Very nebulous, if you look at the bill, the three ninety-two, it's not real specific, you know? There's a lot of leeway, and so you can make it what you want it to be. And I think you'll find, as you talk to these, what I call twenty-first century housing authorities, that that's what they're doing. They're taking advantage, and they're, they're making it what they need for their specific community, and I think y'all could do that as well here.
Well, I want to tell you that because of your report, you gave me personally a lot of data to pursue and a lot of titles and ways. I thought that your, the latter part of your report where you said funding options or ways to fund it, ways to go and so forth, that's been very, very helpful to me to know where to target my research, and I'm grateful for that.
Certainly.
You've done good work on that.
Thank you. I also know that Kerrville, and some of the developments that y'all looked in Austin, that development group out of Salina, Kansas, that was here, they have built probably over the last five years, five or six tax credit developments. So it's a quick jump over there. In fact, I can contact April and set up a, if y'all'd like to go over there for an hour or two one day and take a look at two, three, or four of their facilities, you're more than welcome to do that as well.
Thank you.
Just let me know.
Thank you, Vince.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to item eight E, a presentation of the capital improvement plan. This is the opening volley of our budget process. Evan, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Evan Williams, Assistant City Engineer, and very excited to be introducing our capital improvement plan presentation to you. This is for many departments, and it's a lot of information that we're going to be trying to go through very quickly, so we'll be as brief as possible. This is the first of many discussions for a lot of these projects, so we won't drill down into the weeds too much, but if you feel like you want to comment on something or have a question about something, we'd be glad to hear that. I would encourage you to have these summary sheets ahead of, in front of you, the twenty-year summary for each department. I think that would be helpful as we go through these, so that you can see what we're speaking about and what's planned for the future as well.
Take the time you need, Evan.
So our, our capital improvement plan, so this is a twenty-year outlook and a five-year schedule of projects that are meant to improve the physical infrastructure of our city facilities and also purchase equipment, large pieces of equipment with multiple-year lifespan kind of plan for those improvements. So the city, many years ago, went through a pretty intensive process of developing master plans. We interviewed and engaged consultants to analyze our existing city infrastructure for various departments, look at the conditions of facilities, the risk-based assessment of those facilities, and they would develop a model and then plan out projects over the next twenty years, looking at changes in development, growth, things of that nature, and how we're going to be responding to those in the future. That effort was also then followed up, in many cases, by fee studies, rate studies, that would fund those projects, look at servicing debt, and make fee and rate adjustments to also be financially prepared for each one of these projects that we have in our plan as well. These are the, the departments that you'll hear from, so kind of broken down into general and enterprise fund departments. Each department's director will come up here, they'll go through their presentation. As applicable, the superintendents will also come up and be available for questions. It's very great to have them here and to provide more color to some of these projects. And so from a fifty-thousand-foot view, very high-level view over all our departments in the next twenty years, we have, you know, three hundred and forty-four million and change planned in our outlook, broken down between that general and enterprise fund. You can see those percentages there. Within these next five years, you can also see on those pie charts how those funds are allocated and distributed for those projects and equipment in those enterprise funds. So a very healthy chunk for, for water in our drainage department, sanitation as well. And then within our general fund, there's a large allocation for fire, police, parks, and our streets as well. So if I can, you know, turn it over to Clinton, just also provide some comments there.
Sure, and I think Evan covered it very well. But again, this is the starting point, as the mayor mentioned, of the official budget process. The retreat that we had recently, we were talking about community priorities. A lot of these projects fit into those buckets of priorities that the council was talking about, so keep those in mind. The project spreadsheet, again, as Evan mentioned, if you would, if you haven't taken a look at that, if you would, and if you're interested in moving a project or further discussing a project, we'd be more than happy to do that today or offline. This is, again, just kind of the wish list that we will start with going into budget. A lot of the public works projects, as Evan mentioned, these are things we've been planning for. In fact, he was one of the consultants. We hired him away from one of the firms that did the water wastewater master plan. So he's very familiar with that. But we're going to work through this, and Mayor will work through this fairly quickly in terms of the presentations, but we want, if there are any questions, to be able to answer those today. But if you want to get in a little bit further in depth, we'd be more than happy to spend a lot more time with you offline.
So the first apartment we're going to hear from is the administration.
So my name is Shelley Goodwin, and I'm the city secretary for the city of Fredericksburg. I have asked for two CIP requests. The first one is records information management. It's, I'm asking this year for fifty thousand. This is, the State Library of Archives provides us a minimum of how we're supposed to keep our records. And you can see by the picture in the bottom left, that is a sewer pipe hanging over our city records. So that is a request to help us start to bring us into compliance.
Did you say sewer pipe?
Yes, sir.
That's a pipe in our basement. And again, what she's trying to illustrate is that our records could potentially, permanent records could potentially be in jeopardy.
And the next request is to remodel the first floor lobby, the main entrance lobby. This would just be, it's been the same since before I got here. And so this would be to make it more inviting and to kind of show off our proud, you know, heritage, as well as we propose to put a video monitor and have public announcements scrolling. That's it.
Okay.
If you have questions. Last time that was updated? Anybody know?
I've been here five years, so.
About the lobby?
Yeah, I've been here five years, so I do not know.
Just one question, would there be a person staffing downstairs, or would it?
So my proposal is to take some of the funds and look at climate control storage location here in Fredericksburg.
I'm sorry, I meant for the lobby remodel. Is there going to be a person downstairs? Will it still be the staff member upstairs?
We, we've talked about some of that, along with the safety and security improvements for city hall. I believe we're going to keep that person upstairs. This would be just more of an inviting, walk through the front door and grab and see some information. We're still talking about how all of that's going to come together. Garrett has the plan. He's working with a consultant on it.
That's correct.
Separate than security. Thank you.
Brian For our Chief of Police. So I have a five-year breakdown of the police department, running out to the large figure plus five years, and that is where the current public safety, public safety building, council chambers, and municipal court lies at a price of about twenty-eight million, except five years beyond. So it makes up the majority of the total allocations for the police department improvements that you see there. So police department projects, capital improvement projects over the next five years include police substation renovation, detached temporary holding facility for animal control, enforcement center and boys and girls club renovation, public safety building construction, fleet replacements, fleet equipment installation, weapons and supplies, vehicles and handheld radios, and vehicle and body camera video systems. So for next year's budget, the police substation renovation, two hundred thousand dollar estimate cost to the general fund. The substation would have a glass partition and door headed to the lobby to secure the building, to make it accessible to the public during business hours. The current fest room would be turned into a squad and briefing room and a bike, storage and maintenance room. An additional restroom and kitchenette would be added to accommodate the increased number of employees and police volunteers utilizing and working in the substation. The next project is detached temporary holding facility over behind the current animal control shelter, estimated cost at two hundred and fifty thousand, which would come out of the special revenue account, not the general fund. The detached temporary holding facility will be used to house stray animals, animals that must be isolated, animals that are not suitable for adoption. The facility would provide a secure and humane place to euthanize animals according to state statute. And the facility would also include a shower for employees to disinfect and exposed to animal bodily fluids. And as you can see, that blue square behind the current animal shelter is where this structure would be built and placed. Fleet replacement, equipment, and installation, large number, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand. That breakdown is five hundred and seventy-five for fleet replacement, seven patrol cars, one unmarked vehicle, one code enforcement truck, and one evidence cargo van. The equipment and installation costs are a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which are primarily for the seven marked patrol units. Radios, weapons, supplies, and video systems, hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seventy-three thousand for seven mobile and handheld radios, sixty-six thousand for five patrol rifles, optic ammunition for department qualification on an annual basis, and sixty thousand for eight vehicle and body camera video systems.
Chief of Police?
Yes, sir.
Are those leased items or purchased items?
These are purchased items.
Thank you.
If there's questions about fleet lease, I did check in with the city's enterprise fleet lease manager approximately two or three weeks ago. The cost to lease one patrol unit per month is sixteen hundred dollars. And then, so then she, she wrote out a quote for seven police vehicles for one year, and we keep our current vehicles and purchase outright for five years. The dollar amount is about two hundred thousand dollars more if the police department decided to lease than purchase outright.
May Chief, let me ask you, you had the handheld radios. Wouldn't that, was that not part of the deal we did last year with all the radios?
No, sir. No, sir. The, the police department radios are completely separate from the fire and EMS package that was approved last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Hearing from our fire and EMS, next.
When we, when we look at the fire and EMS emergency management operations that we have in our, in our community here, over the next five years, we are proposing about a twelve million, seven hundred and six thousand dollar proposal for additional equipment, facilities, and, and ambulances as far as what we're, we are proposing. In that, in that proposal, we are including a fire station on our east side of town. When we evaluate our operations, majority of our calls are moving towards the east part of our, of the city as well as the county. So as that area continues to grow out east, there is a need for additional resources in that area to be able to respond to our emergencies. From the ambulance standpoint, we actually respond to the whole county, so that kind of helps us out on the east side of town. And when, when you look at the data that's associated with that, that is where the majority of the calls are, are occurring currently. Next year, we are proposing an additional rescue truck, I'm sorry, a replacement rescue truck. Our current rescue truck is twenty-four years old, somewhat smaller than this vehicle. Some of the challenges that we face in our, in our response to especially to accidents, major accidents, where we're tying up the highway, is the safety of our people who are on the roadways. A major, a large majority of fatalities that occur to firefighters and EMS personnel is while you are on the scene of an accident. This unit would allow some, some potential blockage of those situations. When we're out on the highways and we're shutting the roads down, you would be amazed what we see. And so what this unit, not only will it carry rescue equipment, it would also be there for blocking the highway so it keeps our, our responders safe. In addition, we are proposing that we purchase two additional ambulances next year. Now, when I say purchase, we're, we're, we're actually at a point in time where we can actually get two units for the price of one, and that would be remounting two of our current units that have somewhere around a hundred and sixty-five thousand miles on them. And, and that would, would help keep our fleet moving forward and also have reserve ambulances that are in place. We currently operate with five ambulances and three of those being staffed twenty-four seven. So we have two in reserve, and if one goes down for whatever reason, then we, we bring one of the reserves in to, to respond to, to the call.
Chief, when, when you say remount, we're keeping the box, we're just replacing the chassis.
That's correct. So essentially, they're removing the box off of the current chassis and putting a brand-new chassis underneath that box. And it saves us quite a bit of money by, by doing that. We can get two for the price of one, basically. That's all I have. Any questions? You may have. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Let's recess for five, for five minutes. Thank you. We've been here for, you know, almost two hours. We've been here for, you know, almost two hours.
What's her name? I've met her. Yeah. We're gonna get there. All right, ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. Let's reconvene. Counsel. All right. Mr. Whiting. All right, ladies and gentlemen, please. All right, Eric.
Morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Eric Whiting with the IT Department. We have a projection of a five-year breakout for just a little over half a million. And for this year, uh, we have four projects that we're looking at doing, uh, for just a little over 290,000. This is going to include a remodel of the IFES IT facility. Uh, it's going to be a deployment of a new phone system, uh, user management software, and an additional broadband ring to Friendship Lane. So this past year, we had, um, had done our broadband project, and we were unable to fulfill one of the zones because of some easements that we're in, where we were not able to procure. And so we have a credit of just around $140,000. And so we were looking at ways that we could, um, create an opportunity for the growth on the southern part of Friendship Lane and go ahead and run and, and complete a fiber ring from 16th South to, uh, 290 East. And that entire project would be about 185,000, which we were falling short just about 45 to 50,000. So we were, um, we're looking at doing a $50,000 for that project.
Eric, what was the reason we were unable to run the fiber down 29, or top of Hill Road?
We would have to be on C-Tech poles, and we would have to procure around 31, uh, private easements. And I didn't really want to slow down the empower project because of that. So we, we went ahead and moved on to the other ones. The next one is some software. Uh, this is Azure Active Directory. And, um, what this does is we have 44 pieces of software. And, and as we've grown over the years, and we have over, um, over 200 users, we have, um, uh, each one of these pieces of software will have, uh, our users have different username and passwords to, um, to be able to maintain. And also from a security standpoint, um, from our, our network side and our security side, we have to maintain every single one of those, uh, security logs. What this would do was this would create a one centralized location where every single piece of software would be authenticated against one location. And we would be able, from a security standpoint, would be able to get those security logs and monitor those. Um, that's a 46,000. Uh, that would be an, an ongoing cost. And there, and we would not have any cost savings. This would just be a, a cost benefit who we get or a benefit, um, from a security standpoint, and also ease for our staff and users to, um, uh, be able to access all of, all this software. That's locally and also like web-based software.
So is that basically one authentication login to get access to all the enterprise apps?
That's correct. And what we really like about this is this was through Microsoft, and we will take advantage of their standardized, uh, security, like two-factor authentication on how you would get on a bank and get your text messages through a phone. So two-factor authentication. So that's what we, we would like to move towards that because of just, uh, Microsoft does a great job with the security.
Is there a mobile client on the handhelds or?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I promise to stay out of the weeds, so.
No, it's all right.
Thank you.
Uh, next is a, uh, a voice, um, phone system deployment. Uh, there would be a cost benefit to this. And, uh, we currently are utilizing Teams, um, for a collaboration suite. Um, all of our, uh, emails are going through there, and then we have departments that can use this collaboration suite. So with Teams, they also have a VoIP system or a phone system. And this would also create a one-stop shop for all of, um, our communications to be on one piece of software. Uh, this would be a yearly cost savings. So the initial deployment is 36,000, um, and then we would have a yearly cost of 26,700, and we will be saving around $300 to $400 by going this route, but with also a great cost benefit.
Can you explain VoIP for the council, please?
Sure. Um, so a VoIP is a, a phone system that utilizes data on the internet. Instead of having a point-to-point phone call, um, they, uh, we, we use like, we utilize the internet, um, to do that. And, um, I guess that's, in a 30,000-foot view, the best way I can describe that. So, uh, but it does create an opportunity that, uh, you can use your, um, we're all used to, uh, since COVID, we're all used to video conferencing. And also this system will utilize your, your cell phone. Uh, you will have a desk phone, and you'll also have your computer, and you will be able to receive phone calls on all three of those devices.
So y'all don't have VoIP now?
We do have a hybrid VoIP. The next one is a remodel of our IT facility. We currently have two rooms, and we're office-ing four people in those two rooms. Um, so we do have a, um, area that is, is covered. And, uh, we are requesting, um, about 50,000 to build two more additional offices and a, um, a conference room in that area.
Is this the City Light Building? The old City Light?
Is that, is that next to the recycling center?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Is, I'm just, you know, Clinton, is there a long-term plan for that building? Is that the best option for, for them to continue to house there?
Well, aside from New City Hall where we can house everybody under one roof. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's where our data center is too, Mayor. Any more questions?
Would you replace the, the tree stumps for the columns, or would you keep those?
We're gonna cut those out.
John Savage, where are you? Uh, are you here to speak on speci- a specific item of the, of the plan? Is it, is it tennis courts where we are now? Okay. We need extra money for our presentations.
Didn't the budget?
Hello again, Mayor and Council. Andrea Schmidt, Parks Department. Um, as you mentioned, I know there are a few different people here to speak on the tennis and pickleball, uh, item that we're gonna discuss here in just a minute. So this is our five-year breakdown. Um, over the next five years, we're requesting a little bit less than $10 million. This current year about 2.9, and then over the next 20 years, a little more than 17. This would be for 68 projects over the next 20 years, um, including existing some of our current park facilities, sports complex, the trail system, and things like that. So let's get in. Our first project, um, is a maintenance project, and it's to replace the roof on the Pioneer Pavilion. The roof has been leaking the last few years. We haven't had very much rain. Um, it was not at the top of the priority list. It has moved up now. We have leaks coming into the lights. We've got it coming into the, the ceiling tiles, um, so we need to replace that roof. In addition, the front wall with Pioneer Pavilion has separated slightly from the building. It's not a safety concern, but we do need to get that, um, uh, fixed as well. Uh, Ray Plumbing is there today right now, actually doing plumbing work in the bathroom. So this is the next phase in making some repairs at the Pioneer Pavilion. Our next project is to replace the third restroom at the RV Park. Over the last few years, we've replaced both the other restrooms, the smaller ones, um, with these, uh, concrete modular buildings that are built off-site and pulled in and set with a crane. Um, this is the last remaining one. It's more than 40 years old. Currently, if we need, have a plumbing problem, we have to break out the concrete to actually try to find the location of the plumbing issue. So this is a pretty significant issue. We would like to replace this one. Up in the right-hand corner is the Navajo restroom, which we would replace, um, this building with another Navajo restroom like we did this past year. Our next project is Oakcrest batting cage replacement. Um, currently it's unusable. There were some safety issues, so we had to remove part of it. This would be to, um, put in a new slab, a cover, new netting, framework, um, the roof. This would be very similar to the one out at Old Fair Park, but it'd be more linear than a square. Again, at Oakcrest Park. Uh, again, another maintenance project out at Oakcrest. We have one of our storage buildings. Uh, the roof has been leaking. Um, we also don't have enough room to put a mower in the storage facility, so we'd like to expand it by just a little bit. Right now, the, the crew that is working out there has to trailer a mower, uh, one to two times a week from the warehouse over on Friendship. So we'd like to be able to keep a mower there, make it more efficient, especially since we're having trouble filling our staff positions. We want to make their time as useful as possible. Again, another storage facility out at Old Fair Park. Um, currently, the employee that works out there has just a very small room. A mower cannot fit in there. The yellow circle would be the location of the 20-by-30 building. Um, if you see that picture, that's our, uh, walkway or our breezeway by the restrooms. We don't have places to store all of these items, um, so they're just thrown in there. It doesn't look very good. It's not safest thing in the world, so we'd like to get all of this cleaned up and also prevent him from having to trailer a mower out there as well. Uh, this next project is the pickleball, um, tennis court, new tennis courts, new pickleball courts. We will replace the existing lights on the new, on the existing tennis courts. We'd add some parking. Uh, we would get both the totch house and the Pioneer Pavilion off of Septic and tied into the sewer. And then we would add parking where those locations are right now, the drain fields. Uh, this is a $1.8 million project, so we added about 20% based on last year's cost. Those were about 18 months old. Um, this project, there are parts of it that could be phased in if we wanted to. We don't have to necessarily do all of it, and it's probably gonna take a couple of years anyways to, to make this project happen if we get funding. Uh, this is a preliminary plan. So what we would do is add four new tennis courts. That driveway that goes between the swimming pool and the totch house would not be, all, would not go all the way through anymore. Uh, we would, and that, we would lose a lot of parking there. Those four new tennis courts would be exclusively for tennis courts. We would have six pickleball courts added back behind the swimming pool. Those would be exclusively pickleball courts. The existing six courts we have would continue to be multipurpose. So we would have both pickleball and tennis using those courts. Um, you can see the parking next to the, um, totch house. That's where the drain field is for the Septic. So if we tie into City Sewer, we would go back and add parking there to take the place of the parking that the tennis, new tennis courts would take. And then we'd also want to go ahead and, um, take the Pioneer Pavilion off Septic and put, um, do some parking improvements over there as well. This is kind of a breakdown of the costs of the different elements of the project to get that 1.8 million. Um, there is a little bit of contingency in there. That would include contractors doing most of the work and professional engineering costs as well. And these are just some photos of the location. The first one is the location of where the new tennis courts would go. It would take up that road. And then the second is the flat area back behind the, um, swimming pool where we would put the six new pickleball courts and hopefully run a sidewalk from there over to the parking by the totch house. Uh, the new tennis courts themselves, we would install, uh, Musco lighting, which is what we use on our other ball fields. This gives us the capability to control lighting, uh, not, uh, control lighting from our phones or computers. Um, it's also needed. These lights are very old. We do have dark spots, so we would like to get those upgraded to new lights. And then the infrastructure improvements, which would include the new, um, parking lots, and we'd also do some curb, curbing and fill around the totch house. We've got a lot of erosion problems out there, and we'd like to try to get this all taken care of with one project. Um, moving on to Parks Department equipment. So we've got two on here. The first is the Ventrack, um, about $60,000. This is a multipurpose piece of equipment that we could use at all of the parks. Um, to mow slopes, grind stumps, and do trenching. We have to rent some of these items during the year. And then a Grounds Master 4500, which is a, a large lawn mower. This would be a new piece of equipment, not a replacement piece of equipment. Uh, we'd really like to get where we're only using certain mowers on our ball fields because it makes them a lot cleaner and nicer looking. Um, when we have rough mowers and we take them on the ball fields, you end up having unlevel areas. So this would be something really nice that we could have our maintenance on the ball fields be better. These next projects would come out of the Tourism Fund because they're related to Market Square or Christmas decorations. The first one would be to replace the tile in the large restroom at Market Square. The current tile has, you can walk in there and actually feel the hollow spots underneath the tile. It's also, the type of tile it is, it's very difficult to get clean, so it always looks a little bit grungy and dingy. What we're, our plan would be is to match the tile we're putting into the new restroom on the northwest corner of Market Square. It'll be a darker on the bottom and lighter on the walls. Dark black almost, and then a cream on the walls. Um, again, this is a storage expansion. Um, on the, uh, this is the building where the catering kitchen and the current storage is at Market Square. We don't have enough room to keep everything there that we need, so we'd like to expand it out about ten feet. Um, this would, you can see the garden on the side. It's not the most maintained garden, so it would take that garden away. It wouldn't um mess up any of the event footprints. We do wanna make sure and get this, uh, discuss this with Market Square Redevelopment Commission to make sure that they're on board with this. But this, again, would help us store all of our equipment there, so we're not hauling things back and forth to various parks.
Andrea, let me ask you, I know with the police wanting to take the fest room, what's the, what's the solution on the replacing the fest room?
So since we're having the other room coming online, hopefully by the end of this year, we'll have another space on the other corner of Market Square that some of these events could use the county money. Uh, again, that's something that we have a meeting on June thirteenth with Market Square Redevelopment, so we're gonna talk about both of these items at that meeting, just get their feeling. Um, I don't think, we would want the police department to take over the fest room until we have the other room open, so we can make a good transition between the two. But I think the timetable could work if everybody's okay with that. And then this last one is um would be an electric department project, but funded out of the Tourism Fund. Uh, this is to replace all of the wreaths and decorations on Main Street. Last year, we replaced the Christmas tree um and all the lights on the square, this, and the wreath on the square. So this would be, be to replace the large wreaths that are up and down Main Street.
I have one comment about the wreaths, because I was here when that started. We did a lot of research on the vendors that provide these things, and you can imagine there are many. The one that we found was the best because they, they really popped with color and they have lasted, the, the, these are the ones who were bought in two thousand nine, right?
I would have the, the first thing.
Well, you haven't bought any since you've been here.
He's shaking his head, yes.
Yeah. Um, downtown, I mean, there was a vendor that we saw and picked, so I would just recommend that we go back to them if we can. And I'm assuming that one ten was probably about what it cost.
Yeah, Downtown Decorations is, it's, they're on live board and they're who we purchased our equipment from last year.
Mr. Savage, would you, uh, thank you for your patience. Uh, this is the, part of the presentation you wanted to comment about.
It's still morning. Um, good morning. My name is John Savage and I'm president of the Fredericksburg Tennis Association. I'm grateful to the mayor and council members for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the FTA Board and our members. In eighteen months, FTA will be celebrating its fiftieth anniversary, which I think we can all agree is a significant milestone. During the past five decades, we have not only contributed to the growth of tennis in Fredericksburg, but we have made significant upgrades at the tennis complex at Lady Bird Park, including self-funding and building a clubhouse and an equipment storage facility. In addition to our mission of promoting youth tennis, we have contributed numerous scholarships to local student athletes, including nine thousand dollars in scholarships to nine outstanding recent graduates of FHS. In short, we are committed to this community and we think the proposed new facilities and upgrades are needed for structural reasons, practical reasons, and community reasons. Structurally speaking, the footprint of the present courts do not meet USTA, which is the United States Tennis Association, requirements, and therefore we cannot hold sanctioned USTA events at the tennis complex. While we greatly appreciate the recent resurfacing of the present courts, Court Two, which is built over a hole that was an old silo, is already cracking, and this was only several months ago that had resurfaced, and there's, there's no amount of resurfacing that will fix that court. Um, the present lights do not conform with the Dark Skies Initiative of Gillespie County, as I understand them. Practically speaking, we share the courts with our pickleball neighbors and do our best to accommodate both of our needs, but it's not ideal. One reason is that all of the different schematics needed to lay out boundary lines for tennis courts, pickleball and junior tennis. One of my highly skilled players told me the other day that there are, there are so many lines now on the courts that it's become confusing to him. We all know that pickleball is taking the country by storm now, but tennis participation is also up since the COVID pandemic. According to an article in Forbes Magazine last year, participation in tennis is up thirty-three percent since twenty-twenty. The reason is because tennis was routinely listed as one of the safest outdoor activities you could do during the pandemic. If we learn nothing else from the COVID pandemic, we should at least realize that fresh air and sunshine are the enemies of the virus. Finally, by letting our tennis complex at Lady Bird Johnson Municipal Park lag behind USTA standards, we're missing out on many opportunities to showcase an outstanding municipal park, to attract sanctioned tournaments that bring people and revenue into the community, and more importantly, to offer top-rate facilities for people who make this city their home. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again for your patience and helpful comments. Andrea, the proposal for this um tennis and pickleball project, does that include the upgrading to the standards he's talking about?
No, that, it, the new courts would be at those standards, but the existing courts, we wouldn't do anything. We've had some engineers look at them, try to do a post-ention overlay or do different things to help with that court, and they said they suggest just leaving it alone, um, because it's gonna cost more to fix that, those courts than just building new courts. So the other option would be to bulldoze everything that's there, just put back six courts, but then we're still not gonna have enough courts.
The new courts, the four new courts would be to the standards he's recommending?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir. I don't have your sheet. Do I, is that your sheet in your hand?
No, sir. I filled out a comment.
Oh, are you Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Step up here, sir. I forgot. I'm sorry. Are you gonna demonstrate for us?
It's been a short morning and it's been a real easy morning, I'm sure.
I know.
Um, my name is, first of all, thank you, welcome. Uh, I appreciate the privilege of uh speaking for this group today. I'm Brian Schroder. I'm a founding member of the Fredericksburg Pickleball Association, and some of my fellow members are here with me to support this, uh, this conversation. I've been asked to speak.
Hi, pickleball people.
On their behalf. Um, we're here to support the construction of pickleboards, pickleball courts for our community. Um, it's been very enlightening for me this morning, this whole presentation, this whole meeting, and I would like an opportunity to maybe enlighten you a little bit. Pickleball has a funny name, but it's a very serious game, okay? Um, the sport of pickleball is fifty years old. It's not a sad. It's been around for over fifty years. Um, according to the Sport and Fitness Industry Association, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America for the past three years. The governing body of the sport is USA Pickleball, whose registered membership has reached seventy thousand persons and is growing exponentially. Our local association is a chapter of this group. USA Pickleball is responsible for the establishment of the rules, for the oversight and the development of the game. I just want you to know that we're not a backyard picnic-based organization. This is a serious entity that we're talking about. There are currently eight-point-nine million players of pickleball in the United States of America over the age of six. Our membership in our organization has doubled from fifty to one hundred in the last year, and it's growing at a pace that's equal to the global growth of pickleball. Important to this conversation, to this group, is that pickleball is expected to be a high school collegiate and Olympic-level sport at some point in the future. So when we're looking at setting budgets for infrastructure, for development of courts that will ultimately serve the assistance and the support of the high school, the local high school community that is being served by the tennis courts right now, I think with forward planning, we have the ability to be on the, the crest of that wave as opposed to being behind that wave and not having places for our children to play when it becomes a sport that is UIL-sanctioned. There are professional pickleball teams, much like there are pro teams in other sports, and there are national, international media coverage that is very, very obviously beginning to happen. So as an organization, as a sport in the community of Fredericksburg, we have these challenges before us. We're currently playing on courts that are mixed-use with tennis, as Mr. Savage has already alluded to, and he very eloquently said, "The lines for pickleball courts are not the same as the ones used by tennis," creating a maze of confusion when you get out there trying to determine where you're playing on that court. Each time we play, we have to set up our temporary nets that are stored in a closet by the courts and then break them down and return them. Some of our members struggle with the physical strength needed to do this. We're the only sport in the community that's forced to do it this way. It would be kind of akin to having soccer players having to wreck their goals in order to play and then take them down after it's over. Um, our scheduled playing times, we often lack enough courts to enable consistent play for members and walk-up players. So just not enough space for us to play. Our players are residents of the local community. I've heard this morning talking about the, the challenges associated with balancing revenue that comes from outside and support for inside projects. Our needs are not based on the desire to attract more tourist revenue to Fredericksburg, although we have the ability to do that. We're looking to serve those that are already living here and those that intend to live here at some point in the future. Our organization has generated revenue for the city through tournaments that we have sank, that we have supported and we have sponsored here locally. The entry-level skillset, I think this is really important too. One of the reasons for the growth of pickleball is that the entry-level skillset and the entry-level costs are not an obstacle to very many people at all, okay? It's a very simple game to play. It requires two small pieces of equipment and a net and, and obviously some courts to play it on. As a community, Fredericksburg, we feel like is, has the ability, the potential to fall behind in our, our neighboring communities without established dedicated pickleball courts. So in summary, um, I'm a bit of an academician and a scientist by training. It's been my past. Um, we all live in a, we all have a desire to be healthy and active. And if you haven't read his recent book, Peter Attia, and his book Outlive: The Science and Art of Longevity, lists five different things that are important to live a long and healthy and satisfying life, two of which happen to be exercise and emotional well-being. So we believe that pickleball allows for social interaction for our adult population, and it serves a vital role in maintaining the physical and emotional fitness of this population group, thereby enabling players to achieve the goals of longevity and health. My friends and I come to you this morning with two requests. One request may be unique to you guys, would be to join us, to accept our invitation to come and play. Come know what pickleball is and come know what the attraction to it is. I can tell you, each and every one of you, that you're represented in the pickleball community, okay? With respect to your demographic, your age, all of those things, please come join us. Please come play. Please come understand what it's all about. And the second request we have is to invest in the physical and emotional well-being of Fredericksburg citizens by constructing needed facilities. Our city has received international acclaim for being a wonderful place to visit. This is an opportunity to make Fredericksburg an even better place to live. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and attention.
Yeah, quick, a quick question, and I'll definitely take you up on the invite, and my question will demonstrate that I've never played before, so I apologize.
No worries.
This is probably more of a question for Andrea, but when I looked at the budget, I think there were six pickleball courts that you were looking at, and the cost, I, I believe, from memory, was less than tennis courts. So my question is, are they different sizes and different materials? Why, why is there a cost differential?
Yes, sir. They are different sizes. I believe it's estimated that you can put four pickleball courts in one tennis court. The mixed use that we have going on at Lady Bird right now is because we have the ability to put multiple courts on one tennis court. Okay, so yes, sir, they're very much different in size.
Thank you for your comments. Very helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your patience today. How many of you are here representing pickleball players? Kathy? Thank you for your patience and for being here. Kathy, um, and any further questions for Andrea? Oh, Mr., uh, well, I'll just ask you generally. This is a consensus question. So what's in the proposal here is six new courts. Is that a good thing? I mean, is that sufficient in your mind, or are you asking for more, or?
Well, at the risk of sounding like I'll take what I can get, um, the answer is I believe that we, we need to start somewhere. We need to initiate the growth of it, but long-term, I think we will be behind the eight ball if we only have six dedicated courts.
What number would you say?
I'm not prepared to answer the question because I just, it wasn't something that I researched before I came, so I'd love to give you, be able to give you an answer of how many.
Correct.
Um, but a larger community, a larger, a, a facility that would enable tournaments that would be sanctioned by the US Pickleball Association, probably in an area, an area of sixteen perhaps?
Sixteen, okay.
Thank you.
Andrea, do you remember how many courts were in last year's budget?
It was the same amount. We're, we're, on that location we've chosen, because of the trees that are back there, we're limited on how many we can put. Now, if we decided to choose a different location for the football courts, we would have more room. But on the location we have right now, trying to keep all of these together, we're limited on space. Without removing trees, our goal has been not to remove a few trees as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Uh, feel free to leave if you've, if you've heard everything you need to hear. Yeah. I mean, you're welcome to stay, but I know what it's like. Been here two and a half hours. Kathy? Yeah, y'all have to stay. All right, Chris?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, the next fund we'll talk about is the Street Department fund. As you can see here, uh, in the five-year breakdown, uh, this next year, we're just asking for just under two and a half million, uh, with a, a total allocation over the next twenty years of just over eighty-eight million. Uh, a lot of this you can see is in fiscal year twenty-five, um, not next year, but the following year. And that has to do with a lot of the big um transportation projects that we've discussed with council in the past and will continue to discuss with council in the future. So Street Department priorities, a lot of these projects are derived from our transportation master plan, uh, but some of them are annual projects, like our Street Department, um, annual paving project, the sidewalk installation, which we'll go into a whole lot more detail on, uh, here, uh, on the next couple of slides. Uh, so the first one, the annual paving project, uh, this is estimated cost of six-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. Uh, this is a material-only purchase. Our Street Department, uh, does the actual installation and paving, uh, materials and lab, excuse me, uh, labor and equipment, so it's not included in, in this, uh, annual number here. Uh, we take a lot of pride in our streets. Uh, we've mentioned this multiple times to council. Uh, this is a pro, a, a program that we have done for a number of different years. We try to do about ten percent of our streets annually. Uh, so this allows us to get around to every street approximately every ten years. Sometimes, obviously, we're getting to those a little bit quicker, but this is our annual seal coat project. Um, it doesn't just, uh, it's not just the seal coat, but it's a level-up, a prior to seal coat and, and so forth. So a really good program. Uh, very proud of this program. Uh, similarly, over the last eight or so years, uh, we have allocated funds for our, our sidewalk installation. Uh, last year, I think, was a little bit less than a hundred thousand. We're requesting a hundred thousand of this year. And over the last eight years, we've sent, spent about three hundred, excuse me, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on installation of sidewalks and repair of sidewalks that aren't ADA compliant. Uh, next project here is the South Leno Shared Use Bridge and Upright Street Sidewalk Project. Uh, this is a multi-year project, so we do have funds in the budget, uh, in the current budget, uh, for the design. Uh, this project, actually, uh, we opened bids on, on Thursday, so in a couple days. Estimated project cost for design and construction is at one-point-five million. Uh, if you recall, this, uh, project, uh, did receive some text dot grant funding, through the, through the Transportation Alternative Programs Fund. Uh, so very proud. Uh, a lot of the funding in, in the order of just over nine-hundred-thousand dollars was funded by this grant.
Chris, I have a question on this. I, I'm just seeing this map. I thought the cost was for the actual bridge going over Berens Creek. Why are we having to pay for the, the sidewalk that goes from the creek to, um, on that street that's already there too?
Sure, over to Lincoln, certainly. Uh, that was part of the grant application. Sure. Over to Lincoln? Certainly. That was part of the grant application. And Garrett, you might have to respond. I know there's some development in that area as well.
I was just curious why the developer wouldn't have to pay for sidewalks there.
Well, that was part of the grant application to improve connectivity. So if you just build a bridge, it doesn't really get you anywhere. So the idea was to get people from East San Antonio Street down to Old Fair Park. We really focused on that as well as the redevelopment that's occurring in the Warehouse District. So.
It's just gonna be a sidewalk, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, the bridge is a sidewalk. You're talking about the extensions from both sides on the bridge.
Correct. But, but that was all part of the grant funding. So within that nine hundred thousand dollars, it's paying for a large portion of that, that sidewalk as well.
So I assume it's gonna cost us about another couple of hundred thousand out of our pocket, right?
So, so as Chris mentioned, we opened bids on Thursday, so as we go through this budget process, we'll know the exact numbers.
Well, it could be up to seven hundred thousand for a court of this.
But a lot of that funding has already occurred in previous fiscal years, primarily for design. So again, that's all wrapping up. We'll know the exact numbers here shortly.
We'll move into the next couple of slides are equipment request. The first here is a replacement of a 2004 water truck. This is obviously used for our operations in the Street Department. This particular piece of equipment has seen some additional, or increased maintenance costs just because of the age. So proposing to replace this at a cost of just over a hundred and forty thousand. And then the last slide here, again, a piece of equipment. This is actually a replacement of two pneumatic rollers, again, used almost daily within our department. Again, high hours, increased maintenance cost. The proposed estimate on this is two hundred thousand for each one, so a total of four hundred thousand. We are still getting some bids on this equipment. The first bid we did receive is a little bit less than this two hundred thousand. So we'll refine those numbers prior to coming to council as part of that budget process.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Because of the disruption in the world of the pandemic and supply issues and the cost for parts and that sort of thing, we've, we've faced that last budget cycle and it's been gone a while. When you're looking at new equipment, especially this big rolling stock stuff, any, any break in the, the issues that we deal with with getting it on a, on a quicker time schedule or, or the, the bid that comes in and hey, it's gonna be twenty thousand dollars more? Talk to me about what you know different from last year.
Certainly. Depending on the department and the piece of equipment, some of the equipment is becoming a little bit more available, meeting the schedules that were promised. Other pieces of equipment that are a little bit more specialized, for example, like a bucket truck and the electric partner or something like that, we're still seeing those long lead time items. I wouldn't anticipate the pneumatic rollers or the water truck to have a very long lead time, but I don't have the exact schedule at this point from those vendors.
But in general, it sounds like it's gotten a little better.
I, I would say it's getting better, but it just really just depends on the particular piece of equipment.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll talk about tractors and shredders with another public works fund here. That sort of equipment, I would say, is getting better. Those vendors are having that equipment in their yards.
Well, I'll take a piece of good news.
Yes, sir.
That's good. Anything else?
Well, I'll, just on that topic, I'll say that we've kind of planned that as well. So some of these larger pieces of, we're actually moving that up a little bit for, to account for those long lead times. You know, maybe we could get by a little bit longer or continue to replace parts, but we're trying to bump this stuff up to account.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Are you Lauren? Lauren? Okay. You didn't have your glasses on, so I couldn't tell if it was your or not. Would you see me after the meeting? Thank you. She's in the newspaper. Okay.
Hey, Mayor, City Council, Clinton Bailey, City Manager. I'm playing golf pro for the day. Introducing the Golf CIP, five-year breakdown, totaled just under two million, about three hundred and fifty thousand in projects and equipment for next year. Couple improvements include a tree replacement program. It's been going on for three years, complete replacement of all of the furniture and the Redbird Grill. Now that we've replaced all the windows, a lot of the fixtures, countertops and so forth, this is the last portion of that. Street clock installation to complement two recently zerscape areas outside. I'll talk about that just a little bit more. Signage package to replace a lot of the aging signs around the golf course. Banquet serving package, package of a lot of banquets, a lot of meetings out there going on. Okay, starting with.
Let me ask you, Fred, on some of those projects, we tried to get sponsorships like on the clock and things.
Right. As far, as far as the clock project, that complements a project that was donated by a local citizen, about a fifteen thousand dollar improvement to the golf course. So we have a lot of those types of things that are.
I'm just saying that we tried to use those opportunities to get advertisements out there too.
And we really haven't had to. Just, just to give you an idea, and I have some of the stats here. In 2017, we, the golf course had a 1.5 million dollar budget, the last year the city operated a golf course. And we subsidized that budget by about 700,000 out of the general fund. Last year, same 1.5 million dollar budget, Touchstone generated 2 million in revenue. They currently have 767,000 dollars in the bank. Out of that revenue, they pay for their O and M, all of their equipment. These projects, they're completely self-sustaining. We pay them a seventy-five hundred dollar a month, ninety thousand dollar a year management fee out of that revenue. And we also paid them a year-over-year incentive that's usually between eighty and a hundred thousand. So this doesn't really impact our budget. And when you look at that, that budget, that revenue surplus, that is what we're applying to a lot of these projects. But people still donate projects to the golf course. And a lot of these folks have donated to our parks, are lifelong golfers and so forth. So we haven't really pursued that at this point. But we have lost a lot of trees at the golf course. We are actively replacing those. This is a three-year replacement program, the third year. I replaced 20 in the first year, 12 in the second year, and we're replacing 12 more this year. Again, these are four-plus inch diameter trees around the course. I mentioned the Redbird Grill. This will finalize the improvements in the grill. We've replaced just about everything else in the open area, about seventeen thousand dollar expense, including tables and chairs. The street clock installation, this will be facing eighteen at the front. You can also see it coming up number nine. And it will be right there next to the new scoreboard in the zerscape area that was recently constructed out there. I think that is the next slide here. It costs 13,500. You can see the landscape area right here, the zerscape area with the scoreboard. This is just right in front of the clubhouse. We're creating another zerscape area similar to this at the cart staging area. The total cost of that will be about 25,000. Finally, the signage around the golf course, the tee markers, some of the signage on the drive-up and so forth. Again, aging, not real clear how to get around the course. That will be replaced at a cost of 25,500. Banquet serving pieces at a cost of 5,000 dollars. We take advantage of this when we have meetings out there again, just to be able to serve some of the large groups that, that do have meetings in the Cardinal Room out there. And finally, a nursery green. Back in, I think it was 2016 or 2017, we had a very deep freeze that damaged a, a number of, of greens. It takes a long time to recover from that in the springtime. Sometimes you don't get through that. We had a similar issue this year with a chemical burn of a few greens that we're trying to get through. It would be very helpful if we could borrow sprigs from a nursery green located on-site to achieve that, that faster recovery for those greens. Word gets around it. You have a few greens that aren't up to par. That is happening right now. So we're trying to address that as quickly as possible. But this right here would be a, a good investment for, again, helping recover those greens from freeze damage, whatever the case may be. And that is it. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I might have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Fortunately, or unfortunately, you get to see me the rest of the presentation. We'll start that with the Stormwater Vegetation Management Department. So for the next year, allocation of just under 2.7 million. Total allocation of 20 years and beyond is, excuse me, out for the, out for the next 20 years is 51 million. So the drainage, stormwater management projects here do include maintenance and drainage improvements at various locations throughout town. A lot of these projects were derived from our drainage master plan completed back in 2016, 15, 16. We allocate 50,000 dollars annually for miscellaneous drainage projects around town. Some of this does include getting a contractor on board at times to do these projects, but a lot of times it just includes material purchases for our in-house crews to install different materials, again, to, to handle some of these miscellaneous drainage projects. The large project, this is an ongoing project currently in, in design. Again, a multi-year project is the North Lano Storm Sewer Project. Estimated project cost of just under 2.7 million. Again, a Texas Water Development Grant-funded project of just under 400,000 with a 0% interest loan, which council approved previously of just over 2.2 million. Again, a multi-year project, finishing design in the next few months. Hopefully starting construction later this year, early next year. This project essentially would take a lot of the, the flows there at College Street on North Lano, where there's a, a lot of water that crosses, a very hazardous situation, I would say, as that water crosses North Lano. It would convey this down to the creek and go under the bridge at North Lano instead of going across at College Street. Another piece of equipment, as the vegetation management department continues to work on tree removals in the right of way, we've currently been renting a stump grinder to remove those stumps from those, from those locations. This year, we're requesting to purchase a stump grinder so that we don't have to go rent and, and rent that piece of equipment. And usually we stack up eight to 10 of these at a time and then go rent a piece of equipment. This would allow us to remove that stump immediately and not have it sit there for, say, a couple of weeks or a month. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
I want to point it out to the audience in their newspaper. The fact that we're being quiet and not asking a lot of questions is not because we don't have them. It's that we know that we're gonna have another opportunity to drill down specifically on these requests.
That, we'll move on to our sanitation.
So sanitation department, you can see the breakdown here for next year and then over the duration of our 20-year capital improvements plan. These projects include the development of cells previously. We'll talk a lot about the transfer station, recycling center, and equipment needs. Primarily the request this year, excuse me, it's part of next year's budget will be equipment needs. So just jumping right in, the track loader, this is a piece of equipment that's used daily. This piece of equipment does have high hours. And similar to some of the Street Department equipment, just that we've seen a, a large increase in the, the maintenance cost associated with breakdowns and so forth. So again, used daily for our operations at the landfill.
Chris, do you, when, assume the old equipment you sell or do you keep it as a spare?
It just depends. Sometimes we will keep it as a spare. I think for this one, we're planning to keep it as a spare. But a lot of times we do put that out for bid and, and get rid of equipment. But it just depends on the department. I don't know, Josh, if you want to add anything to that?
That one would actually, this, this piece of equipment here is our spare. This would actually be the one we're selling. And then the current one we are using will go to the backup and then the good one will take place with the daily operations.
Good question. Similarly, the chipper, used daily on our daily routes. Again, high hours on this chipper, a great piece of equipment, helps keep the community clean. Estimated project cost just over 100,000, but again, just replacing that aging piece of infrastructure. Questions?
I have, I have one. On the spreadsheet, the detailed spreadsheet, there's 4 million dollars that's listed on there but not listed on your presentation here.
Yes, sir. That was for the transfer station. We didn't want to, it's a typo essentially. The transfer station, we will continue to discuss.
Okay.
But it's not being proposed next year.
Okay, thank you.
It's a, it's a global project that we have discussed with council and we talked about including it in the presentation. But again, it's one of those projects that until we get the feasibility study and, and we want to work with council kind of as a, like a separate workshop with that. Similar like transportation projects and some of the other projects.
I'll point out as well on that chipper, there are also some improved safety features that go along with that unit, so that will be a good upgrade. The electric department will be next.
All right. So in the electric department, you can see the breakdown here. Next year, requesting just over 450,000 with a total allocation over the next 20 years of just under 2.5 million. Couple improvements projects includes the LED security light, streetlight changeout program, substation breaker relay project, and then again, the heavy equipment components of the electric department. So over the last few years, we have worked on replacing all of the LEDs, all of the streetlights with LED lights. We are now moving into the security light. So we do maintain and operate security lights within town. Estimated project cost, and this is actually a two-year project, or two years remaining on this project, a material purchase only for 40,000. And this is again to replace the high-pressure sodium lights to LED. Replacement of the substation breaker relays, estimated project cost of 25,000. I think we have a total of three relays remaining. We're proposing to do two of those this, this year and then the third one next year. So again, a multi-year project that we've been working on for the last few years since 2021. And lastly, in the electric department, a replacement of a piece of equipment, the digger truck. This is a model, year model of 1994. This is a, a good piece of equipment, has, has really served the department well. But the problem is the parts is very hard to come by and very, very hard to find. So it is replacing a existing 30-year service truck at an estimated project cost of 380,000.
When you say that, it's a digger truck. Is that, is that drilled the holes for the poles?
Yes, sir.
It's only 30 years old.
Yes, sir. We talk about this project almost annually about replacing, or replacement. Lee can probably speak to this in a lot more detail, but the, the crew likes this truck because it's all a manual thing. There's no computers and so forth that operate it. But when it goes down, it's very hard to find the parts to, to make a replacement or to get a repair. That's all for electric. Thank you, Lee.
If I could just add, Mayor, Council, this is the largest city budget, 14, a little bit over 14 million. This is one of the smallest departments, it's seven individuals, some of the lowest asks and over three decades of no lost time due to accidents, so exceptional safety record for a very dangerous job that they do every day.
Thank you for that. All right. Last but not least, water waste. All right, last but not least, water wastewater department. Next year's request is just over 6 million. Total allocation over the next 20 years, almost 121 million. So a lot of emphasis on a lot of big projects within this water wastewater department. Capital improvements include water, sanitary sewer, reclaim water, infrastructure improvements. Again, a lot of these were derived from the water wastewater reclaim water master plan that we completed back in 2017. Currently, we have 30 projects over the next 20 years. And some of these are very large projects, as you can imagine. Our first project here is a replacement of two-inch water mains throughout town. This is a project we've done over the last couple of years. Currently, they're working on the 300 block of West Center. So, and they'll complete a bore underneath Mylum as part of this project. Essentially, what it does is, it replaces all those two-inch mains, not only from a domestic water standpoint, but installation of fire hydrants for fire protection in those areas. And a lot of these two-inch mains we see are in older parts of the town. That have served the community well, but they are aging infrastructure. And we do have a number of leaks. Over the past years, we have included 300,000 as part of this project. And 300, on the next slide, I'll talk about this, the four-inch sewer main replacements. Broken that up into 300,000 for each one of those. As we've done this project the last couple of years, we're seeing a more of a need for the water replacement than we are the sewer replacement. So we're proposing to allocate 450,000 instead of the 300,000 on the water side. Similarly, on the sewer side, replacement of those four-inch sewer mains. And a lot of times, this results in the inability to get into those lines, lack of manholes, cleanouts, and so forth to unstop lines or clean lines. A lot of the older clay lines are this orange size, so root intrusions and so forth. Again, we're not seeing as much of a need as we are on the water side, so we're proposing to decrease that from 300 to 150,000. The next project, we have the generators that were purchased. They have been delivered. Some of those are at the warehouse, some of them are actually at the project site. The one thing we did underestimate was the actual installation cost. So the conduit, the wire, that sort of stuff. We included 10% of the overall project cost. We found that that was not enough. And so we're requesting some additional funds to actually get those generators hooked up in the cost of about 75,000 next year. The Fairgrounds Lift Station Expansion Project. So, again, during that wastewater master plan effort, we project out where we see development occurring. It's our best guess. Unfortunately, we did have some projects identified, but we had them identified further out. That's development in that area. We're seeing development on Pico Road, the Beginnings, Madrona, those areas. We're seeing a lot of that development that we did not identify as part of the master plan. We're seeing increased flows at the Fairgrounds Lift Station. So this project would help identify, and we probably would look at this holistically, trying to possibly take Green Meadows offline, which is a lift station, and expand, have a large lift station on the south side of town such that we might be able to take a lift station or two offline. So this is going to be kind of a more of a global look when we start looking at design. Probably do some sort of culinary engineering report to see what's going to best serve the community as we see continued growth in that, on that 16th South corridor.
But they do pay impact fees to help cover that, right?
We can, we can use impact fees because this would be considered a growth project. Yes, sir. And so we haven't identified, in this particular presentation, what fund some of those projects would come out of, whether it's impact fees, the capital budget and so forth. But that will be identified as part of our additional discussions before the council during the budget. This project, again, would include the lift station itself, probably some force mains, gravity lines, and so forth. Again, big picture, but this is a high priority for the water department. We have some operational data that shows the need for this one. Similarly, the Bob White or Home-Mix Lift Station Expansion. So currently, you can see, it's kind of hard on this map here. The Home-Mix Lift Station just essentially was put in to take care of an annexation on Bob White. With the development of the apartments just west of that, with the middle school and so forth, we're looking at ways to handle those flows. In addition to that, the Bob White Lift Station currently pumps up and goes into the warehouse lift station, which is a really small lift station, really just designed to handle the flows coming out of the warehouse. So we're looking at bypassing that so that the Home-Mix Lift Station does not go into the warehouse. It just goes directly into another line. We'll probably do some of this in-house construction as far as the gravity and force main. The lift station will probably contract out. Estimated project cost just over 1.2 million.
Chris, by the way, at the town hall that we had recently, that area.
Yes, sir.
The neighbors out there commented, complained about the alarm going off and that sort of thing. This will take care of that.
Well, the audible alarm is a requirement of the state.
Well, I'm not asking for the alarm to go away, but whatever caused the alarm to go off.
Yeah, it's a high-level issue. Obviously, yeah, the current lift station is very small, I will say that.
Okay.
But we can't just get rid of the audible alarm, unfortunately. That is a requirement.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking whatever caused it to go off. This will address more of the issue. I guess it's capacity, I don't understand your business, but it's capacity or whatever.
It will definitely help. It will be more of a modern lift station, I will say. The current lift station is serving very well.
Okay.
But we currently don't get those notifications on our SCADA system because of the size of this lift station. So the audible alarm is to get that call, receive that call that something is not right at the lift station so our guys can go deploy and check out what's going on.
The complaint that night was that nobody was responding. I think Garrett was going to check into it.
Yeah.
So the audible alarm is designed to get a neighbor to call somebody. I think that was the irritation.
That's correct.
We did ask that question to Chris, and he verified the state does require a visible and an audible alarm.
Well, I'm not complaining about the alarm, right? I'm not saying there should be no alarm, don't bother the neighbor. I'm talking about the infrastructure improvement will address.
Yes, it will increase the wet well capacity, pump capacity, all of that. So those alarms will be a much more rare case, being connected to SCADA.
That's what I'm saying, because they're obviously concerned. They see all that construction going on there. So they're obviously thinking, are you guys aware of what's going on over here with water and sewer flow?
Yes, sir. It will address that, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we're working on other ways to address that, instead of relying on someone to call in.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
The next project is located at our wastewater treatment facility. This is a replacement of a bar screen. Estimated project cost 286,000. The screen is about 10 years old, it's having some mechanical failures. This is essentially the first piece of equipment within our wastewater stream to protect any downstream equipment. So anything coming through the plant that we don't want to getting into our other processes, this screen removes that at an estimated project cost three, just under 300,000.
You can also find some pretty interesting items in those machines.
Unfortunately. Next project here is a replacement of some of the equipment within the secondary clarifier, again, located at the water treatment, excuse me, wastewater treatment plant. Estimated project cost 50,000. Essentially, this is a corrosion issue with some of the structural infrastructure inside of our secondary clarifier. Equipment replacement in the water department, replacement, replacing of a backhoe. Manufactured year of 2013. Estimated project cost 165,000. Again, high hours, avoid increased maintenance cost and downtime with that equipment. Next piece of equipment is a new jet truck. This is a combination jet and vacuum truck used in our sanitary sewer system. We do have a larger piece of equipment, very similar to this. But that large piece of equipment is hard to get into some of these areas, alleys and so forth. This piece of equipment does not require CDL driver, much smaller tank. If we do have sanitary lines that run through pastures and in areas that aren't paved, because of the weight of this piece of equipment, it would be easier to get into those areas, particularly when it's wet or weather conditions are not viable to get the large piece of equipment in there. Estimated project cost 445,000.
That a piece of equipment, is it, I know the fuel spill, is it used for that too, or is that a different animal?
Is it used for what?
Fuel spill.
Like a fuel spill?
We would probably not use this piece of equipment for that. No, sir. We definitely could, it has the vacuum component, but we would rely probably on a hazardous crew to come in and take care of that.
So this is additional truck, not a replacement?
That's correct, yes, sir.
It's a smaller truck, as you said.
If you recall, last year, we were talking about just doing a jet truck as part of the budget. At that time, our superintendent left, and we started listening to the water department staff. And they said, we don't want just a jet truck, we want the ability to pull whatever material out, like grease and stuff. Instead of chasing it down the line with a jet truck, we would like to pull it out at the manhole so that we don't cause continued problems downstream. So this is a little bit more costly, but again, it removes the grease and so forth in that line instead of just chasing it downstream. Lastly, a tractor and shredder. This would be utilized not only at the, across the street here at the wastewater treatment plant, but it would be utilized on other city properties, well sites and so forth. Estimated project cost just under 90,000. This is a new piece of equipment, not a replacement. And that will conclude the water wastewater projects. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
A reminder about the Jackson, Mississippi deal. That's why we have this water improvements, right?
Say that again?
The Jackson, Mississippi had their water issues a couple of years ago because they were not keeping up with the infrastructure.
Yeah, certainly. Always looking at projects, whether it's expansion or replacement of existing infrastructure.
I appreciate everybody from the departments for being here today.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it for you, Evan?
That concludes the presentation, yes, sir.
Thank you. Good job. Item 9A, city manager, or nine, city manager's report.
Okay, Mayor Council, wanted to make you aware, but Brady asked me to plug the resident sentiment survey that they released on the 24th last month. This is for your information and anybody watching or listening in. So the survey went out on the 21st, first, it actually, 24th actually closes tomorrow. They have, as of yesterday, had 1,042 surveys being completed between the ages of 18 and 65-plus. It looks like the largest group is 65-plus, 14 between the ages of 18 and 24, 394 in the 64-plus group. So again, questions in the survey, ask residents how they feel about tourism. How well tourism is being managed, how well history and heritage are being preserved. Fredericksburg, we hear that a lot of, a lot of the times through our comprehensive plan, we hear some of the same things. And also feedback on the 2022 Love Fredericksburg TX effort. Through that, they learned how important, again, the German heritage is to residents in the city. Their mission, of course, and again, I'm reading here, became to balance visitor satisfaction with that resident quality of life. So that's really what this survey is all about. So Brady, can you talk just a little bit, I'm going to put you on the spot, about when these results might be available? If you have anything preliminary at this point that you've seen as far as survey results?
Certainly, thank you, Honorable Mayor Council. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning. As Clinton mentioned, we're super excited about the 1,042 respondents that we got as of opening bell yesterday morning. If you haven't taken the survey in the audience, for anyone watching online, please do so. It's obviously your opportunity to share with us, right? Your sentiment on tourism and what it represents to our beloved community. As far as the results go, the survey is actually going to run through Wednesday. So it is open through Wednesday, two and a half more days. But after that, Longwoods International, who's the third party that we've contracted with, will scrub those results to make sure there's no duplication, right? For folks that went on Memorial Day holiday and thought, ah, you know what, I need to take the survey, maybe did so prior to. So they will scrub those results, and then we should have the results within probably two weeks of what that looks like. And then we'll be able to address it with our board and obviously share with the city and council as well.
Don't forget where they can access it?
The, the survey link is available at visitfredericksburgtx.com. And it's also in the newspaper with a QR code online at our social media channels.
Thank you.
Has everybody taken that? It takes about 10 or 15 minutes. Interesting questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brady.
Thank you, Brady.
Terms of staff updates, I wanted to announce to the council that we had, or announce to the council that we have a recent promotion in our development services department. We have recently promoted Anna Hudson to Director of Development Services. So she had been interim for six months, and in that time, she had been studying for her AICP exam, American Institute of Certified Planners. So she passed that exam, she's done a wonderful job. She checked all of the boxes that we had on her 180-day goals list. So congratulations, Anna.
Congratulations. Did you have a speech?
Item 10, future agenda items. Okay, for June 20th, we have the discussion of a proclamation policy. We have the continued discussion on affordable housing. Mayor, is that language okay? According to the budget schedule, we will be discussing city council budget priorities in the next step as we really start diving into the budget process. We have three different conditional use permits. One located at a property, 720 South Adams Street, one at 591 Friendship Lane, and one located in the former Seven Hills Development. Anna, anything to add on those?
Only two of those will be coming next week. That'll be the South Adams and the Friendship Lane. Those are going to P&amp;Z tomorrow.
Will we be able, next meeting, to deliberate and consider the STR ordinance amendment? Are we at the point where we, did you want it to go back to P&amp;Z? Is there a final meeting we need to do joint-wise?
I think that was the idea, to have another joint meeting with P&amp;Z to go.
Are we ready to schedule that?
I think we're, we're pretty close, yeah.
Okay. Could we do that? Could we schedule a joint meeting? So the idea was for us to have one more with a final product or final draft?
Right.
Okay. Then I would like to do that because I don't want this to languish. I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying it's time for us to close the loop on this. Would it be possible for us to meet the council, I know it's a lot of meetings, sorry, to have a joint P&amp;Z meeting with council sometime between now and June, whatever it is, 20th? And, and consider a final passage on that date?
No, we'll have to have two public hearings. So our understanding was that you guys were going to have another workshop with, with P&amp;Z, looking at the first draft.
Okay.
And then from there, you would tell us, okay, we feel pretty confident, make these changes. And then we would notice for the two public hearings.
Okay. Then let's, let's at least schedule the next step, which is a joint meeting.
So do y'all have a preferred date? Because we can call P&amp;Z tomorrow evening, try to come up with a.
Counsel, I know we've got lots of budget stuff going, but I'm asking if we could get this done. Sorry. Sorry.
Clinton and I will be out of town on the fifteenth, our development workshop.
I'm here forever.
The earliest.
Just go ahead and make.
Fifteenth, so.
Would be like a five-thirty, would that be best? Just what your normal, huh? P and Z.
What about Monday, the nineteenth?
Monday, the nineteenth. Okay, would you check P and Z on that one, please?
Check with them and let you know as soon as we can.
Thank you.
That's it, unless you have any other.
Anything else on the future items? All right, we have a couple of executive session items to take care of. I'm going to, once we go into executive session, I'm going to ask for recess for just a couple of minutes. And we have two issues. One is the appointments, that these board reappointments are new. And the other is a, consider and discuss a real estate issue.
I move we go from regular into executive session.
Second. Motion second to go from regular into executive session. Whoever say aye?
Aye.
All right.
I move we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eight R, appointing Clay Sears, Jim McAfee, and Marcus Vidreen to the Board of Adjustments, and appointing Jennifer Eggleston to fill Ashley Hunter's term.
Second.
Motion second to appoint as noted. Any further questions? Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Thank you, Emily, thank you, I appreciate your ability to do that so smoothly. There being no further business, we are adjourned.